Welcome, everyone. This is probably the most populated meeting we've had all year. So we're really happy to have all of you here tonight, at least for a little while. It's May 12th. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Directors. I'm calling this meeting to order. Do I have a motion to establish the agenda?
I move reestablished the agenda as published.
Second. All in favor of establishing the agenda as published, please say aye.
Aye.
No names and no abstentions. That passes by a vote of five to zero. We are leading off with quite a lot of recognition tonight, so please.
Take my mask off so you can hear me and hear these names of awarded students. This is a favorite board meeting of the year. It's the end of the year and we have so many students that we want to recognize for their fabulous accomplishments. Just a little direction ahead of time, the teacher and me can't help myself. We're going to ask you to come up here when your name is called and then come behind me and stand behind the board, go all the way over to where President Tucker is. And you might have to stand in a couple rows. So if there's someone taller, maybe stand behind because we want to get great pictures of all of you to make sure that we recognize you for all your great work. So tonight is a really special night of student recognition. We're recognizing three groups of students for their contributions to our district. And one special student for some time she spent with us as a governance team as well. So first tonight, I would like to recognize the superintendent's student advisory. Dr. Rendell, do you want to come up here with me and you can help me out with this? This group of students works all year with Dr. Rendell and myself. They meet every month and we talk and communicate and collaborate on a variety of topics that are important to them. And they really do help us inform our work as leaders in the district. There are two students from each fifth grade at each elementary school, two students from each grade level at Islander Middle School, two students from each grade level at the high school. And then, of course, our student representatives to the board help lead this group as well. The advisory definitely elevates student voice in our community and is an absolutely invaluable resource for our district. So in recognizing these students again, come on up here and then stand behind a board. When we're all there, we'll have a whole picture of the student advisory together. So we're going to start with our students who represented Island Park, Avery Stabbert and Abraham Hardiff. Are they here? From Lakridge, Kate Gohegan, and Anushka Tawari. From Northwood, Luke Christopherson. And also from Northwood, Byung Wen. V, I'm sorry, I knew that. From West Mercer, Audrey Villal. And Declan. From sixth grade at our middle school, Rudy Bukah. Shannon Wang. From seventh grade, Elijah Wick. And Bonnie. Josh Ulla. From eighth grade, it says Luchon, but it's Lulu. Lulu here? No. And Emily Dunn. From our high school freshman, representing a freshman, Liz Groth. And Ava Zhang. From our sophomore class, Lily Ryerson and Sid Schraff. Our juniors, Ryan Zee. You kept telling him he was a senior and you kept correcting me. Also representing our junior class, Brooks Cosai. Our senior representatives, Ally Phallus. And Gabe Gosman. And then, of course, Morgan Dawson. Why don't you guys squeeze together?
You want to see the certificates? Here we go. Three, two, one. Thank you.
All right. Next, we would like to recognize our students who have participated in Destination Imagination. And I hope and I think that Mr. Baxter is here. One of our coordinators for Destination Imagination. I'm going to talk slowly about Destination Imagination so hopefully students can make their way in here, Mr. Baxter. And we can have them come on up.
Should we walk?
We are going to say names, so when you hear your name, come on in. Destination Imagination students learn the very important life skills of working collaboratively, supporting opinions with logical reasoning, and respectfully considering the ideas of others in conjunction with STEM elements. Students involved in Destination Imagination have spent one to three hours a week for 20 weeks outside of their school day getting ready for the state competition. This preparation consists of creating a story that connects to their specific challenge. They delve into skills such as designing and creating technically sophisticated sets and props, crafting team costumes, and incorporating team choice elements that feature individual talents that can help add originality and craftsmanship to their solution. Our Destination Imagination coordinators are thrilled to announce, and Mr. Baxter and Maggie is, are both here, that they had a fantastic showing at the state DI competition with 17 out of 25 teams winning awards and recognition for their work. Mercer Island School District had 12 teams that were competing in the global finals, and they are here joining us tonight. First up, our elementary teams. We'll start with our elementary teams.
And not all the teams are here, but yes.
We'll have those who are here, but we'll leave all their names. Our elementary teams include, they have to choose a name, so they sound kind of bizarre, but go with it. Anonymous Chicken, whose team members include Nolan Kim, Lucas Pi, Ray Liu, Alex Huo, Noah Tan, Andrew Wang, and Ethan Chanel. And they competed in an engineering challenge involving a light rolling structure and weights. The team managers were our amazing volunteers, Susan Kim, Justin Pi, and Mandy Ma. And Ethan are here, we love them. Another elementary team was the Red Ravens, and it was the first-year Destination Imagination team that won first place in the technical challenge and is going to global finals competition. Team members include Grant Ross, Callie Baumgarten, Elizabeth Yu, Adrian Hach, oh, I'm not, I'm going to really try Adrian. Adrian Hachdar Kostic, Ahana Savari, and Leo Lee. And their team managers were Erin Ross and Tipping Goodman. Our elementary team was the Rowdy Ride-Off. And they competed in the engineering competition and are traveling to Kansas City for the global finals tournament. And the team includes Zara Velamor, Karis Huang, Ariana Zhao, Sapani Heda, Charlotte McMichael, Zara Khadir, and Matea Flawet. The team managers are Mina Velamor and Deepak Heda. Our middle school team, our first middle school team, was, oh shoot, we forgot. And they decided to try out the rolling structure engineering challenge. Team members Neil Panja, Matthew Strong, Derek Weiss, Gibran Khadir, Nikhil Mahesh, and Samo Leslisla. With team manager Jamie Cook, one of our high school teachers, built a clever revolving set and many well-designed props to help tell the story. We also had, oh, I love this name, the Savage Cabbages Band. They're an eighth-grade scientific team that placed second and received the Renaissance Award at State. The team members are Sadie Kim, Steffi Kim, Sidney Parcel, Blakely Bork, Yasmin Banrio, Adaya Seha, and Tristan Chan. And their team manager was Julie Langley. Notably, an all-female team competing in the scientific challenge. That's awesome. Next, we have the Vectors Girl Scout Cookies. That's the name of the team, or that was the name of the challenge. They worked together for three years and this year worked on the technical challenge, Daring Escape. Team members include Vida Nayar, Yael Sullivan, Asha Shroff, Claire Capasso, Jay Metta, and Jonah Inka. And their team manager was Mr. Baxter. High school-level teams are a toast to bread. A seven-member engineering team containing our three seniors. The team placed first at State, was commended for their metaphor for the pit of human greed and evil, and was granted the Renaissance Award. Team members include Helene Wang, Aiden Klein, Ethan Cheney, Aditi Manbi, Keegan Wang, Gareth Tatum, and Nandini Damodaran. Team manager is Julie Langley. Another food-focused high school team was the Bread Bros. And the Bread Bros is a first-place scientific team that wowed the appraisers with their dynamic scenery, artistry, beautiful dance, teamwork, scientific knowledge, and powerful ending message. The team members include Bobby Selden, Sofia Lozelle, Amelia Hahn, Adise Swenson, Stella Chen, Isabella Sullivan, and Izzy Ferrari. And their team manager was also Mrs. Langley. It was a theme with the next group being contains 2% juice. They took first place at State for service learning. The team planned and implemented a successful book drive to support the Seattle Public Library and the Seattle Public Schools while raising awareness of carbon emissions. The team includes Anahita Najafian, Molly Dudley, Simon Chanel, Ted Matheson, Ashwan Krishnashwani, and their team manager was Mrs. Langley. The team Heroic Villains has been drawn to the Finarts Challenge for years. How many years, Mr. Baxter?
Five.
Five years for this team. Team members include Alex Millman, Lexi Liu, Naomi Doe, Ryan Kinder, Ben Lamcurty, Connor Wood, and Anna Cosconan. And the team manager is Mr. Baxter. Mr. Baxter's probably been with them for five years too. What twists another high school team is a team of members that have worked together for many years, even longer, some since fourth grade. So Destination Imagination really builds some strong friendships. They're all musical solution to the Finarts Challenge was fun, interesting, and includes several technical elements that literally have the audience saying, aww. The team received the Da Vinci Award for Outstanding Musical Talents. Team members include Elliot Gier, Tyler Langley, Daniel Marcus, Sol Park, Sid Schraff, Lucas Lesser, Julius Perez, and they all worked together with Mr. Baxter. As you know, Mercer Island Destination Imagination has had a long history of success and is due in part to the large support of district staff and the many parents who volunteer their kinds of team managers, appraisers, and all-around helpers. A huge thank you.
Sorry. Jazz Pizzazz. You have to add them, this is the one.
Mr. Baxter.
Mrs. Langley, would you please go with add them?
Any one of the students? Jazz Pizzazz from our high school.
Any of you want to talk about engineering? Finarts!
I've been doing DI since fourth grade and it's taught me like a lot of leadership skills. And this year's challenge, I got to work with new people and that was great.
On two rows behind the board, so.
Langley, come on up. Huge thank you, Mr. Baxter and Mrs. Langley.
Come this way a little bit further.
Jazz Pizzazz. Won a huge award called the Spirit of DI. So congratulations.
Here we go. One way back, all right. Here we go, everyone. Three, two, one. Thank you.
All right. Next, we are going to recognize our Mercer Island High School DECA students. I know you're all watching so you know exactly the routine that we're asking you to do here. There are 253 students who participate in DECA at Mercer Island High School. And our two coordinators and leaders still agree to come here and be with us with 253 students that they wrangle, Jennifer McClellan and Shannon Tuck. Huge thank you to all of their hard work with DECA program this year and for many, many years. We have 25 of the 253 students who qualified at the state competition in March for the International Career Development Conference that was in April from the 22nd to the 26th in Atlanta, and they all made it there and back safely. Our students joined 1,070 other Washington State DECA qualifiers in traveling to Atlanta to compete with 17,800 DECA business students from around the world. Our Mercer Island High School team represented the community and school with professionalism and keen business and marketing insights while performing extraordinarily well in a field of highly qualified students from around the world. Amidst this intense competition, Mercer Island High School had seven students called to the stage for the awards portion of the DECA International Career Development Conference in what's called Mercedes-Benz Stadium, with either a recognition in an aspect of their event, the test or the role play, or as a placement in their event. The seven students and their categories are, and I hope they'll come on up and join us up here, Kayla Friedman and Hannah Hobson for travel and tourism team decision-making. Nina Hobson and Mia Fisher for project management, financial literacy. Matthew Shield for accounting applications. Nikesh Werner as top 10 in his role for automotive applications. Kaylin Nagher as top 10 result for sports and entertainment marketing. And Kayla Friedman and Hannah Hobson also went on to sixth place overall at the conference in their event. I know that we have other DECA students here with us. We would love for you to come up and join us along with Ms. McClellan so we can recognize you. And in Ms. McClellan's words, "We are always so proud of all our Mercer Island High School DECA students. They are so committed to this business and marketing experience, but this year is especially poignant as we emerge out of our two years of COVID impact on our DECA events." It was the first event that the superintendent had to cancel back. The first wedding to COVID broke my heart. All these students are so focused, dedicated, and committed to learning and performing. They inspire and humble us as their teachers and advisors. We will big thank you to those advisors for all their hard work with DECA this year throughout the years.
Three, two, one. Thank you.
We are going to wait and do our student representative to the board at our next meeting when both our student reps can be here and parents can be here too. So more to come at our next May meeting. But we do have a couple of nationwide monthly recognitions that we want to make sure we acknowledge. First of all, May is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And we did put a link in our agenda that we hope folks will take a look at because it really offers a series of online events commemorating Asian Pacific Islanders, Asian Pacific Americans are in Heritage Month. And there are some wonderful pieces on there. I learned a lot by just kind of looking around in the website and finding out so much of how Asian and Pacific Islanders who have enriched America's history and are instrumental in our country's future success. May is also Mental Health Awareness Month. And attached to our agenda is the most recent presidential proclamation. Every May since 1949, Mental Health Awareness Month is celebrated to raise awareness about the importance of mental health and its impact on the well-being of all Americans and to provide an opportunity to acknowledge the dedication of our country's mental health providers who service and support the improve the lives of many Americans. So it's appropriate for us as we come out of this pandemic to acknowledge Mental Health Awareness Month as well.
Next would usually be public input, but we have no public input tonight. So next after that is the student representative report.
All right, I'm solo tonight, but this will be the last quarter for the school year for the students. So we want to make sure we included everything from the last month kind of to the end of the school year. So starting at the elementary schools, like every year, all the schools have their fifth-grade sweatshirt signing party. And then with their comfy sweatshirts, students will go and take the US Back in the next couple of weeks. I'm excited, but most of the schools have gone or will go to Islandwood, which a lot of students are really excited about in the next few weeks. And then after US Back, the schools will be having their fifth-grade plays, which students have been preparing for. And finally, to close off the year, all the elementary students participating in most anticipated sporting events, the All-Ireland Trap meets. And P E teachers at each school have been preparing their young athletes to make their school proud and of course have fun while doing it. And then the middle school has also been very full of spirit recently with their Spirit Fridays. Some of the themes so far have been Twin Day and Sports Thursday Day. They also had a photo booth at lunch to promote positivity in the school. The middle schoolers are just as excited as the elementary schoolers to take the US Back, obviously not. The middle school is also in the home stretch of pride for their play in the wood. And that will start on May 20th, I believe. And then finally, the eighth-grade party is actually at Inver Mini Golf venue near Bellevue Square. So they are staying ready for that. Then at the high school, obviously lots of going on as always. We are still in the midst of AP tests kind of wrapping up this week. Members of different music programs at M I H S are hosting a fundraiser, we create more cookies, which I believe is tomorrow. And then, yes, May 13th in the pack. And the freshmen at the high school are pretty much the only ones happy about the US Back because they get a lot of mornings off while the other grades are testing. And this past week, the Putnam County spelling bee was put on by our drama class and that had a nice best turnout. The newspaper, we have been coming up with the final issue, the senior issue. The gathering lots of kind of senior wills and test notes from the seniors has been really fun. And then a lot of spring sports are competing at Kinko Playoffs this week, which include boys soccer, boys baseball, and also girls tennis. And then Leadership held its first full in-person prom in three years on Saturday. And over 300 seniors attended. I know I went and it was a great time and Andrew helped plan that. And then as we look forward to June, we have the Summer Kickoff, which is a collaboration between international entrepreneurship class, advanced marketing, and radio. And then after the Summer Kickoff is when they'll say bye to the class of 2022 on June 9th. And then later school is out for everybody else for summer. So that's what we have to look forward to.
Thank you, Morgan. Next item is well governance process monitoring. Well governance process monitoring, Board of Health C 1801, Fundamental Four analytical critical to global awareness, level one review.
And so just a reminder to the board, this is the actual first annual monitoring of Fundamental Four. This is the fundamental that was rewritten by this board last spring, it was during the pandemic, where we took four, five, and six fundamentals and combined them in what we really sell you pieces that we wanted for our students to know and be able to do. And you can see that the superintendent interpretation for Fundamental Four is attached. And we do have some staff here along with Dr. Rendell to walk you through the 2021 indicators for I O Four.
Do we want to rearrange with tables or are we okay with them just sitting in front there? Okay, just sitting in front there. I will hit them all and then we'll start up.
We have a green room now. Thank you.
And dreams, let me get to the elementary part. We've had it in just a short clip, it's a video, it's in Board Docs for it. So if you need some. Yes, yes, there's a video. All right, so we are, you know, kind of starting a new adventure with this particular fundamental. And dreams and Nova really took the lead on compiling some of the information. And so I will turn it over to them in a moment, but you know, this has been one that was part of the condensing of some of the other fundamentals, just as a reminder for the board. And so, you know, looking at ways that we can really target analytical and critical thinking can be challenging, but the best way to do it is putting it into context. We do have some indicators from the EES survey that I believe Nova is gonna talk about. And then I'll talk a little bit about the CMG, which is the civic-minded graduate survey as well. And then we'll turn it over to the school teams. The original focus was on particular classes at the high school. We've kind of expanded that a little bit. Our middle school team will be here. They're going to be coming in on two wheels momentarily. They have a big trap meet tonight, so they'll be coming up here in a moment. But really, we tried to expand it to, to allow our elementaries to have a voice and to really demonstrate where that fits in as well. So with that, Nova will turn it over to you for just some general overviews of what we're seeing from the EES. You've been working with the CE and then just things you want to point out.
So just a couple of quick reminders about the ES data. So in 1920, we administered the ES just before the closure. So in fact, our numbers indicate that, I guess, normalcy or what it used to look like. So I think that that's important to reference because what you see obviously in 2122 is a stark difference in numbers between those years. So if you really look at it, 1819 was the last normal year for our students in complete start to finish. And then we skipped a year. So 1920 was, we did just before the pandemic. And then in 20, we skipped 2021 and went into 2020, 2122. So you'll see those drops in numbers largely, you see a lot of those drops in our fourth and fifth grade students, which is interesting. We don't really have any hypotheses about that just now. But it'll be something we obviously have to dig into a bit in terms of what our students are feeling. And I think our elementary principals would certainly probably mirror some of what they're seeing in the numbers in terms of how they're seeing those behaviors emerge in the buildings as well. And how students are feeling about academics right now. So I think that those are, they feel very jarring certainly. But I think that it's something we're seeing across the board. When I spoke with Ronnie, who was our person from CE, they saw those same drops across the board in other districts as well. So our district is not the only district experiencing those drops. And so she pointed me actually not to these numbers as being the most concerning for her. She talked a little bit about some other numbers that had changed for us that she wanted us to focus some more attention on. So we are looking at those going forward to try to figure that out. And of course, we'll continue to look at this data to determine where we can be better.
So the question by secondary students who in middle and high school students.
Fourth and fifth graders are called out because of the grade level because those are the only grade levels in elementary that take it.
And when was, was in the fall?
No, the survey was administered in the winter, so it's opened in early February and closed in March. And the asterisks that you see there as well is they took some questions off and altered them and combines them with some others. So you'll see that those are missing as well.
Questions on this portion before we go to the CMG?
I mean, I guess the only thing that I noticed from the survey that we looked at in last board meeting, which was the high school students, but everyone I think that stood out was the very low percentage of self-esteem. And some of these, at least in the elementary, seem to reflect the same lack of self-confidence to be able to sort of figure out solutions or agency. And I just wondered, you know, to what extent that is pandemic-related to perhaps non-pandemic-related aspects of, you know, how we can make sure that we can communicate complex concepts that still allow students to believe in a positive vision for the future and their own ability to affect that. I'm not sure that it's just pandemic-related, but I look at the high school self-esteem and see tie in to perhaps some broader issue.
Yeah, and I must say, I think some of what we see in those fourth and fifth graders is if we think about their last normal school year was first grade for those fourth graders. So there's been a lot of education disruption for them. And so what would normally take place to develop some of those skills hasn't to the same degree. So I think that there's some of that. And then I know certainly what Megan and David are seeing in the elementary reflects a lot of them.
I just asked whether it was a comment because I agree with what you're saying in the confidence in part of this. Because we see this jarring difference between the fourth, fifth grade and the secondary. So there's a definite sense of agency, right? So during pandemic, the older kids can come in and already have some skills, you know, and then so they're able to embrace or address adversity. And during this time are still able to have tools to process. But obviously our younger kids don't have that sense of agency or skill to be able to address the trauma and challenges of COVID. And so my question is, I'm glad that we're taking a deep dive into this and think about intentionally then. Our, our strategy has to be targeted by grades because then we see here that this younger grade of students, you know, if we're talking about resource and equity, how do we shift a lot of our attention on this younger age group as they're moving up, right? And recognizing that our secondary students are finding, and he needs assistance and research as well, but maybe, maybe not at the same caliber. And so I just kind of, you know, encourage us to kind of start thinking and being intentional in targeting resources and intervention, especially to the younger grades that are moving up.
I almost wish that there was a way of notating, like when you're thinking about students or thinking about a grade of students, like, like this child had like first grade, second grade, and then like in bold, like third grade, fourth grade, like kind of, you know, weird. And then, you know, fifth grade, sixth grade, like back to normal. So you know, you just kind of, we all have to kind of keep that in mind. But that like if you're, if you're, you know, in third grade, COVID has disrupted a much more significant percentage of your education than someone consistent here now.
But, but this was really about confidence and agency. And I think during this time, you know, COVID numbers were, were pretty good. But I could imagine an elementary school is being dominated by rule following. There'll be six feet apart or three feet apart, depending on time. Be careful outside. I mean, I, I guess to, to what degree was that, did you notice? Were students really impacted by, by all those rules? And is that reflected in this, this number and their loss of agency?
Oh, they worked for about two weeks.
They became students again.
I would say, to be honest with you, just if I may, I'm in the classes and I understand some great work being done, not just on the, just in your instruction about empowering kids to, in their independent research, their teacher, student as teacher. The data is really active and, you know, there's the world right now. And we're going to present something shortly about something on a global. So I'm hopeful. I do see that we're slowly bringing that instruction about developing agency in kids and the choices they make and and giving them more power to present and push back respect with their peers and conversations itself. I think we're in a good trajectory.
It's also worth noting that, that we, the students like held, held steady in a lot of these areas, you know, like, like I have creative ideas. Like I'm good at the ways of doing things. Like we didn't lose anything there. So, so we're just, you know, reflecting on like what's different.
Now we'll have to observe the next several years to see the long-term impact. And frankly, we were just having a conversation earlier today about just normative data as well. I think is going to be a bit different than what we see students performing. So I think there will be some differences in all sorts of data.
So when we look at the CMG survey, this is the civic-minded graduate survey. This is the second year that we've administered it and thanks to Erica for heading that up at the high school. We haven't had a chance, I think it was administered last month to our seniors. And we bumped it up about four weeks. We still didn't see the participation that we were hoping, but we did get 98 students to participate in the survey. We'll continue to look for ways to try to increase that. There's always the delicate balance of do you give it too soon or too late with seniors and what's the right spot there? We know we were impacted by AP testing a little bit as well, but I think what I, my cursory look at it and Erica and I haven't had a chance to talk, but you know, the cursory look at it is if, it seems like those in the neutral, the threes and fours kind of stayed fairly consistent from one year to the next, keeping in mind these are total, a totally different cohort of students who experienced school somewhat similar, but very differently. But you know, those threes and fours kind of stayed together, but you see the shift from the five sixes to the one twos compared to. And so where we lost some of the higher marks in the five sixes with degrees, it seems like those really shifted to more of the ones and twos with disagree. So I think that's going to be worth looking into. Something that we haven't completely thought about, but might be useful is possibly giving this survey like at the beginning of the junior year. And then again, at the end of their senior year, so we can get some better cohort information. Because what we're really trying to figure out is, you know, are we sending students off into the world who are civically minded? You know, do they have those tendencies to take what they learned in high school or during their high school years and apply those beyond high school? And how are they going to engage and impact the world around them? Eric, I don't know if you had any just thoughts.
Well, I really look forward to kind of debriefing with you and definitely with the admin team of just reflecting on the data here and looking at what are ways that we can keep growing. I think that it's, it's important that we really examine this closer and also look at when we might introduce it or if we did it junior year, senior year as well in the future. But I also think it'd be good to ask some of our students as well. So maybe with some of our groups, Student Voices for Change or other student groups to just kind of does it ring true and why? So I think that's important when we bring on a student.
Morgan, I'm not going to put you on the spot. I'm not going to ask you if you took it or not, but you're looking at the data. You know, anything kind of sticking out for you or insights as a senior who's, you know, been experiencing this and thinking about your high school experience?
I definitely agree just where I put that the shift from the amount of ones to twos is definitely striking. I, I'm still kind of reading through all of them, but I mean, I think definitely COVID impacted. I know our like social skills of the grade. I know the amount we interact with one another. And so I hope that's not permanent. I'm sure I'm interested to see data from the next coming years. And yeah, I'm going to keep reading through this and then if I can see somebody else.
It's interesting because the ones that seem to bump up a lot and the ones that twos are community oriented. Where students are going out into the community and having experiences and they haven't had been able to do that. Just number 21 that talks about students, whether or not their experience, experience has helped them write a letter to the newspaper. They probably don't know what a newspaper is.
It just say or community.
I know, I know, but you know, they would text or something, right?
Maybe you should say an email.
I, I do think that like if there's a theme, it's perhaps, you know, lack of the agency, you know, expressed in the elementary. And then at the high school though, it seems, or at least a significant minority, like cynicism and disengagement. And I think that obviously school takes place in a larger social context, both, you know, in terms of the pandemic politically. But I think as a, as a school, it should be very intentional about how to sort of mitigate that sense of cynicism and disengagement. Because I, you know, I think that it doesn't prepare students well for life after high school if they feel like they can't change the world and that they can't make an impact.
I'm seeing this a little bit differently because I see a lot of responses here that are, are, don't to me seem cynical at all, you know, like about helping other people and, you know, realizing it's a very creative vote and be politically involved, those kinds of things. I think it's more of a matter of not having had opportunities to, for example, volunteer in the community just because those opportunities haven't been physically possible the last little years. I'd be really interested in seeing this, the same group sample twice because then you can really see, are we actually teaching them this stuff? Because if you sample, if you sample them at the end of 10th grade or whatever, and then the end of their senior year, then they, then you're really comparing apples to apples, like apples to two years old.
Because each class really does have its own personality. So, yes.
Yeah, that's so short, right? I always look at disparity. So when I look at these things, you know, we get to see such wonderful students coming to the board. And so those are the super duper students who are engaged. But when I look at this, you know, it's like almost 70% sometimes of our students who are like, man, right? And then I think my son is one of the, you know, he loves school, loves his friends, but then like, yeah, it's not like the hand. And so as we're doing this, that's, you know, I think it's what Dan's saying, like when we're in Mercer Island, how do we increase that 70%, right? So that they have one thing that they're just really excited about. And so even though the, the fours and the fives and sixes are great, I, I'm thinking that if I'm going through and taking this survey, it's really the three and fours of the net. And so how do we target? And I mean, so that's what I'm thinking of disparity. I focus on those students. And then those who are not, you know, that 10% or 20%, that's, that's pretty significant, right? And so I'm wondering what is that? And David, you mentioned one time, what do you call these? Is it profile students or like little profile? I don't know. You mentioned one time and it's stuck in my head and.
The students?
Maybe kind of like understanding what kind of groups of students that we have. And, and are we only really have activities that really target or really reflective and exciting for them? And then the mad kid, you know, what is it that excites them? And are we providing that? So that's why I'd be interested in kind of understanding more of those profile students that are in the 40, 50s that aren't really engaged.
I think I'm also curious as I've looked at it, you know, all of the sentence stems start with my high school experience. You know, and how do students define that? And if they, you know, to what degree is that just high school Mercer Island high school experience versus my high school experience is also my community experience and whether or not, you know, because we talked about how you know, the number, you know, being in Mercer Island is unique in the sense of its community opportunities, but yet as you're saying, Director, then, you know, not everyone may have access to those same opportunities, but it would be interesting as we look in future years to potentially do this with some focus groups or whatnot that we might be able to glean a little bit more about, you know, that whole, is it the high school versus the whole community experience, whether that's religion or community service outside of school? So I'm wondering about that.
Or maybe focus groups, ask them instead of these questions, like what would make you excited? You know, what, what, you know, because we always assume what we have is currently meeting their needs, but we don't know. And they might throw off something that we're not even thinking about. But maybe focus upon like, what would make you excited to come to school? So I would, that'd be great for, for me to kind of understand those students.
Did, I know we normally have that volunteer. There was a volunteer, community volunteer program we had, I think with SVP or something.
The student voice.
Voice.
Yeah, where students could volunteer with the community. Did that get shut down during the pandemic as well? I know we have a required number of community service hours. And my kids have done that, but I don't know what happened in the last two years. I don't.
They can earn like an award.
You can, another word, it's not required because I got, my kids have not done that.
Yes, yeah, I did see boys, then it was shut down. So I also, I know, as I'm reading this, like Mr. Randall was saying that, like my experience as a high school student, I could see a lot of students reading that. Like my experience as a high school student, I could see a lot of students reading that as like. The like, looking at it as like the building for the high school. But I think some things like a lot of students are involved in like, and, and, and SNR and O I M or like other volunteer things. And maybe there's great disturbing thing, okay, maybe high school hasn't prepared me for this, but maybe. And other ways they've gotten this arrangement, so I think the wording is definitely interesting and. I think that, like we said, COVID stunted opportunities to get out of the community, which is unfortunate, but.
Can we tweak the civic minded graduate survey or is it like a set thing that?
It, I mean, we can do whatever we want with it because, I mean, it was really designed for. The original intent was with college students, actually, about the end of their college experience, so. We can tailor it however we want.
Did he even just clarification, I think, one like presenting it to students, but like this is what we mean by.
Which is the same kind of clarification going back to the E E S for a minute. When we, when we looked at that information data before and principals have gone back to the students and said. When you read this question, tell me how you read it, and it can be very different. And how we as adults read it, and so we had conversations around that to get rid of pre-pandemic as well. How is a, a fourth and a fifth grader reading that sentence and understanding it versus how we are understanding it? So sometimes we do need to clarify with our students and have that help us. That's really the worst.
Yeah, that's really interesting, because I mean, that really could account for the ones and twos, because the way that it's written, it's something that you're, you know, either doing or experiencing cat by school versus during their high school years. And, and people find other ways to do that, which is, which is a good thing. I mean, different communities, so. It, it definitely could, because they weren't doing it at school.
But also the other idea of doing it twice with the same student group would.
It also made, sorry, I was just gonna say it also. Might make more students to fill out the survey a second time, which is like, we're, you know, we did this two years ago, let's see how it's changed.
This is a suggestion, if you want to do this, just to see themes that come out of it. If you just find a mean for this and organize it by what kind of lumpai. What kind of questions they tend to put lower, like if I notice like thirty is really high. Right? What kind of questions tend to be higher, so maybe it comes out of seeds. You know, like local engagements, you know, it might be higher versus things that are more community agency. Is that my. Hope of out of these thirty, because now these thirty questions are just kind of in isolation, but to find a theme that come out. Just finding me and organizing it that way.
And the body of research behind it talks around that really the civic minded graduate is built upon. You know, this, a student self, you know, how they identify and their identity. And then their educational experience and then their community engagement. And those three things together really form the civic minded graduate, so themes like that do start to. Emerge when it gets into that. It's not just about the brick and mortar experience in the high school, that it really is about. That overall development, because that's, you know, that, that's the whole job.
These questions are pretty. I don't want to say deep isn't the right word, but. You really have to think about them and, and with all this survey fatigue, I mean, I was filling out the city survey this week and I gave up. I was like thirty percent. I'm like, I just can't do this anymore. Looking at these questions like, wait, I really have to concentrate to even understand what it's, what is it asking? And, and I don't, you know, I mean. Like if there were five questions, you could really kind of. Take the moment to think really, and I don't know, I wonder if you look through like the, the later questions, like. Are there going to be more threes and fours? Because it's like, okay, average, average, average. I mean, it's exhausting.
Well, Super Dem Kloski mentioned that maybe we think about taking a question or two out and using thought exchange. And that might generate, you know, there's some key question.
And the students are then able to verbalize. In their words, how they're reflecting on that and then they, we get the whole piece of, oh yeah, I agree with that or like that. And you can then measure it by what, how they've reacted to the responses from others.
So let's turn it over to our school teams to give us some perspective from some narrative exemplars. I want to, you want to start?
Well, thanks for the opportunity. I'm David Hoffman.
Everyone, Megan Isaacson, nice to finally meet all of you in person.
So originally it's interesting because when we were revisiting fundamental core, it was, we noticed that there was a lot from high school and middle school and. We were kind of scratching our heads like, whoa, where is them? Started like. Well, wait a minute, we're doing this and this and this and this, so we're kind of excited to share what's happening in the elementary schools and. We decided to pick one specific. Activity, if you scroll down a little bit more, I think the last one, it was the class dojo conundrum. And when Megan and I were like, how do we, how do we explain this? And just like the kids visually and if there's a cartoon associated with it. So you can indulge us for a minute and fifty seven seconds. And we're just, we're gonna do the setup, because I think if you see the setup, it explains what, what this is and. Our second graders and fifth graders are doing this, it's incredible. I'll share and Megan will share with what the dynamic that we're seeing. In the classroom, so it is a conundrum that is, has a global impact. That is presented first in a short cartoon.
Yeah, and this is a platform called Class Dojo that our teachers have access to, and there's a variety of conundrum activities posted. And they're really meant to just bring about inquiry, discussion. A question that is not already, well, a question that's defined, but an answer that is not. When students were interviewed about conundrums and how they felt about it, they said. We love doing that because there's not an already defined solution. We get to discuss and bring evidence. And continue to revise our thinking until we sort of come to, to something that we stand for. And so it's, it's engaging and to back to the point you made earlier, how do we engage our students and say. We want to be here every day is through creativity, inspiration and having a, a question that's worth grappling over. So this was an example that was shared in a second grade classroom. So our eight year olds had a thorough discussion around this weather conundrum, and we're going to just see the snippet as a one minute, twenty seven seconds. And this is what kicks off or hooks the conversation.
This is Elon Musk's.
Their conundrum. All right, I've got a question for you. Imagine this. The corporation figured out how to do something that once seemed impossible. They can make it rain. How do they do it? They fly a plane high into the sky and drop a secret blend of chemicals on the clouds. It seems like magic. However, it's still not clear if there are any long-term effects on the environment. So should the corporation be allowed to sell their product to any of these four customers? Option A, farmer. A farmer would like more rain for their fields. Option B, company. A company would like more snow for their ski resort. Option C, city. A city would like to use more rain to clear out pollution. Option D, country. A country would like more rain to slow down wildfires. Option E, no one. The corporation should not be able to sell to anyone. So should the corporation be able to sell what they created? Are you team farmer, team company, team city, team country, or team no one?
So the kids watch these, and then the first step is they just have time to reflect on things. If they're really going to make this a long exercise, they might do a little research. Now, I was watching eight year olds do this, second grade, eight year olds. And then they, the first round is they listen to, they just kind of share what they're thinking is, and then they can change their mind. And they can join another team. And then they really get into like preparing their presentation. They have to anticipate what the other teams might present in terms of their argument for. Choosing one of those, those teams. Then they're asked to, to, to present. I think all the skills on how to present, how to be respectful and like I said, to anticipate. And then they have another chance to switch teams after they hear all the presentations. And there's no right answer. And it's really interesting, not only some of the, the questions about, you know. You can imagine the big popular one this one was no, because the kids were really concerned about the fact that the chemical element hadn't been tested. And so again, it's issues of global awareness about, you know, that it could extend into another state or another country, like. Like it isn't just the ski resort or isn't just that, that one fire. And then interesting enough, these are eight years, a conversation about. Well, shouldn't corporations be allowed to develop products? This is from an eight year old. And if they don't sell, then that's their problem, like they should have an interest in developing a product that is going to. Do all of the above, like help and also be safe. So it's, we never should underestimate kids, because they're really aware of it, of the issues and. They were passionate. You, you had mentioned how they develop agents and how they want to come to school every day. These are the kinds of activities. They just like clap for it.
So that was just a slice, but I think what David's mentioning really is that. We're, we're trying to build, you know, multiple perspectives and seeing. Issues from various sides in the upper elementary grades, the format of inquiry for social studies or civics lessons is doing just that. You have a variety of resources that you continue to analyze and discuss and revise your, your opinion and belief about the situation. As you learn more, so. I think it's really engaging for our students and, and it crosses a lot of content and interdisciplinary as you see like lots of information just come up in small moments. So hopefully just seeing a little splice into elementary globalism today. Please come visit anytime.
I don't know if anybody, um, Paul's Humans of New York, but there's been a series this week about, about a young man who learned to. Kind of regain confidence in himself and other things through, through being part of a debate team. And they talked a lot about how for, for kids who have felt like a loss of agency in their lives. That debate is one of the most amazing experiences because. Everyone in the room is listening to you at that moment, you know, like you're having to listen to others. And anticipate kind of their feelings and their, you know, arguments, but also at that moment, like everyone is listening to you, so really neat. Way of kind of getting at this goal.
I, I really love this. And I, I think especially for our. Our students who come from cultures that don't actually, or you know, even by gender, right, are not naturally asked for their opinions. So when we incorporate this into our education. They start to form their opinion based on and listening to each other and then us giving them more information. It's really critical because a lot of them go to college, even when they do a research paper, they don't know how to start a research question. Because I have students tell me, no one ever asked me. Like, what do you want to do? They go, oh no, because no one ever asked me. I think it's really important that we continue at this age group. To create these, so I hope we do this every day, so I'm glad that they're asking for it.
Erica, you want to go and then we'll shuffle and bring up our middle school. Fresh off the track, fresh off the track.
Great, so, um, as mentioned, I'm quite a good, um, from the high school and I'm going to just share. Kind of some highlights from some of the different examples and Morgan, if you're in any of these classes and you have any comments or, or anecdotes that you'd like to share, please do. Teachers would definitely do a much better job than I would of explaining this, but. For the English twelve, I'd like to share a little bit. It's Anne Thomar's class and she does this class theme of when we know better, we can do better and puts that out there for all of her students. And a couple of examples, a student came up with a question of inquiry. And focused on what is the impact, positive, negative of social media on society and the individual? And then created a class forum and moved forward with that. That was one example. And then another example that students. Use was how can students still prepare to take out student loans? And what will it look like for your future with regards to benefits and drawbacks? And they ended up doing like a TED topic style with that presentation, so pretty powerful and looking at that with, with twelve. And then with horticulture, I don't know how many you went to the plant sale, but. The horticulture class did a phenomenal job with the, with the plant sale. And ended up raising seven thousand dollars. I was really lucky to go into the class when they were planting and. Just problem solving, working through so many of the. Just different on the spot critical thinking, how, how am I going to handle this situation using the. Problem solving that, that students were working through independently and, and it was, it was really impressive and so. They did sell seven thousand dollars worth of crops and they're very excited for the future and, and all that they're going to keep on doing. And then we've got a great community response as well, so that was, that was wonderful. And two of our other classes that we highlighted here was. The biotechnology research and ethics class and an example. From that class is some of the work that they're doing on exploration of race, ethics and inequalities during the COVID nineteen pandemic. So really diving into looking at that data and working through that as a group. They're looking at. Some of the bioethics of poor blood, having those conversations in class and studying into. How, how this is impacting our world and, and asking those questions and having those deep thoughtful conversations. We were really lucky to have the DECA class or the DECA group here, Jen McCon, teaches the international entrepreneurship class and. She with that class, it's really kind of that idea of. I'm going to throw you something and, and see what happens and so they get a company and she kind of wants them to fail for a while and be in that place of. This is uncomfortable, now she'll say, many of our Mercer kids are comfortable failing. And so watching them work through that whole process and. In the end, really being able to problem solve, work together. And have those moments of analytical critical thinking and, and the success that. That you end up seeing, for example, Mercer company that they, they create, they're going to be doing this kickoff for summer that will happen June first for having. Food trucks and bouncy houses and all sorts of wonderful things to get us going for summer. It's going to be sunny on that day. But yeah, so we, I mean, I can't say enough about the students and the, the work that they're doing to problem solve, to. Have agency and, and also to start a phenomenal teacher at the Boston School.
Morgan, anything new that I had?
I'm just looking through this list. I took business law and I love that class because it kind of went in like. While I wasn't sure, it's a little bit dull, but maybe I'd like it, but we had sneakers come in from all different parts of law, like we have one come in who was a Markstrom lawyer and I was like, that's really cool. She brought us all like Nordstrom goodie bags. I was like, I would love. We had like a lawyer from Amazon. We had someone who worked like in the White House, so it was just really cool to have.
Well, they forgot two people.
Oh, no, I went.
Oh, you went?
Yes. My class, I wasn't there, but I'm sure it was great. But yeah, that was definitely like, looking back, one of my favorite classes, because I came out of it like, really, we did it for the lawyer, because there are actually some interesting parts of law and. I did DECA and that was another kind of hands-on. I'd never taken marketing and I did like a marketing event and just went into the role plays and I feel like I learned just by doing it. There's so many classes on here I wish I'd taken, like the biotech and ethics sounds really cool and always for classes, so I love to see what always.
Thank you, and I think looking at just some of the percentages too, of the breakdown of those particular two classes. Looking at the gender representation of the biotech class and the. International entrepreneurial class, it's. It's going to be a good thing for us to keep looking at too, as we. Take, yeah, perfect, so. There's thirty nine students in the biotech class, twenty five female, fourteen male, twelve Asian. Three two or races. Or is that the student, not white or Asian, and twenty four white students and then we just have twelve eleventh graders in that class right now, but. You see in the I E class and that data as well, so. And one, one thing that jumped out at me too is just the female to male, the gender representation was very helpful. And one, one thing that jumped out at me too is just the, um, female to male, the gender representation was very helpful. Thank you. Any questions? Anne from high school, please.
I was just going to say, I really appreciate the, um. The quarterly, or I'm sorry, wouldn't be qualitatively. Focusing in three year increments in terms of the classes, because really getting an idea of. How they're having it in them. I think that's great.
Middle school, come on down. Um, sorry, we're, we're late. We actually weren't expecting to be able to join tonight. We're a track meet. And, uh, we left out a little bit early to be here tonight. So we don't have a formal meeting. But so in the fundamental four packet, you see we added a couple of examples, uh, from social studies and science about. Really having kids look at different issues from different perspectives. Uh, to analyze different issues from different viewpoints, to really critical think and to think deeply about different topics. And. That's happening more and more. Mary Jo will talk a little bit about how that fits in with all of our work around, um. Level four thinking, but what's not in there, I think. Is the real impact that the IMS elective program has on our ability for kids to. Think critically, explore different issues and topics. And that's one of the things we continue to fight for at our school. Is how to have that breadth of electives. That's one thing that separates IMS. I think probably most middle schools, most middle schools in a six period day, you have your. Your four core classes, you have a PE health class and then you have an art class. But in our school, we have so much more. We have the programming, the robotics. The marine biology, aerospace, all those types of topics where kids are early in their educational life. Can explore issues and figure out things that they are passionate about. Think about things or explore things they never want to touch again, because they found out that's just not an area. But that's something that we really continue to, to think that separates our school. Is if I think about our, our robotics classes. Are going from zero classes a couple of years ago, now we have probably next year over a hundred and thirty, hundred and fifty kids in those classes. And they're really talking about, not only how do I create and move this robot? But how do I move this, this piece of, of Lego equipment from one place to another? Which has real world application as we think about problem solving and, and to solve some of those real world problems. In addition, you see with programming. You see with brain biology. So there's lots and lots of ways that our kids are, are engaging with content. That can help them solve local, regional and global world and global problems. Um, so we're really pleased about that. And it's something that I think, um, we will continue to, our kids will continue to benefit from. And it, it just rolls right into, as Erica's talking about, rolls right into all those choices they have in high school. So. The elective part isn't highlighted in your packet, but I know, uh, many of you, all of you have had kids. Either in the school or come through the school. I hope you have benefited from some of those things. And we really, um. Have some teachers that have really spearheaded some new electives and taking electives in different directions. That are really starting to, um, push kids to think critically in different areas. So, Mary Jo, anything you want to add?
Well, you know, I know I'm kind of over in record when I always come back to our bringing for equity initiatives, but. One of the things that we just did this last district directed is we had an opportunity to examine what we're calling level four thinking. So we're really wrestling. With how do we provide our consistent and regular basis opportunities for our kids to investigate important, um. Concepts and think deeply about their learning. And it's really exciting to have those conversations in a staff. Um, we did a. Activity where, uh, we had twelve, um, staff presenters sharing, um, level four examples from their classrooms. And our staff went around and, and had a chance to view, um, several of those. And then come back to their, what we call PLCs, their content alike, um, groups and say, what did I learn? What did I see was happening in sixth grade language arts, even though I'm a seventh grade science teacher? That could elevate my ability to get kids to think deeply and critically. Um, and, and so we continue to call that level four thinking and we define it as complex thinking, um, connected thinking. We, we include the term criticality, which is really our students being action takers and seeing themselves. In the role of being able to be a change maker. And then I, um, oh creativity. As the other piece, like how am I a creative thinker? And going back to that. The robotics elective, really the essence of the robotics elective is. How can we utilize technology to solve a world problem? So that is the baseline of the course. And so then kids investigate issues of interest and concern and then figure out how to use a robot. To potentially, um, help or alleviate. One of the examples for that was, um, uh, the nursing shortage that is happening in medical. Um, in our medical, um, areas. And so a kid developed a robot that would deliver non, like life. Um, saving things that nurses often have to bring in, um, that would deliver from a room, almost like a drone, but in a robot form. Um, to try and alleviate all the pressure that is on a nurse and bring us up to even more, um, important, um, life. Work. So our kids are really amazing and it's so fun to watch what they come up with and how they create. And we're trying to create those situations in every space that they're in, not just the one elective that they have some interest in.
Well, I think in closing, um, Morgan, as you were talking about, how guest speakers and, and different community members can be really of support in this area. Uh, we're continuing to, to work on ways to do that, um, in, in robotics, in technology, in science. Um, in, in all the content areas to try to use our, our breadth of community knowledge. To help our kids, because we all know the vast knowledge on this island of people that can support this type of learning. So that's another area we're continuing to work on.
Some of these have clubs behind them as well, like robotics has a club and then this community participant, parent participants into that as well.
Yeah, Mary Jo, you want to talk about the lady you attended?
Yeah, well, it's not necessarily the club, but yes, we have a programming club that was generated out of interest from kids who took programming. And so then they. Um, created a club and, uh, and that means weekly and maybe really exciting and fun things. Um. But also it, it's as part of the CTE, um, core pieces. It asks that any course that is funded by CTE, that we have a parent panel giving feedback and input. And so. I had the opportunity to sit in on, um, a panel around programming. And we had seven amazing, um. Community members who came in. Our, our programming teacher shared the curriculum. And they gave insight and input and did they see that what she was doing was. Uh, giving them the real kind of creative experience they needed in order to, um, strike that passion and move on. And then so far, two of those seven have come in as guest speakers. In the class to share their, um, real world daily experience in regards to programming. So. It, it really sparked a passion in me trying to think about how could we do that better across our contents with our amazing community? How might we reshape how our path works? Or maybe we're looking at. Our language arts curriculum and inviting interested, you know, um, community members who maybe are working in jobs, communication jobs. Um, that could give us insight and, um, help lift that up and then. Equally be a, a resource in classroom. So I'll go by answering.
Yeah, no, that's, that's what we, yeah, that's what I was looking for actually. I, I totally appreciate. When people can understand what they're learning and how it applies to real world and real life and using the community to do that is, is wonderful.
We are looking for community interested then from the dragons. That is like the biggest pattern at our school currently. So we have to figure out how to.
That might be one where, where you can draw on actually the high school students, because there are a lot of high school students who have been planning since they were in elementary school. And I suspect some of them will be willing to, uh, come like.
Well, the creativity needed and the collaboration, um, and working out conflict is such an amazing, sorry, I'm really on a. You know, that would be something if they would ask for this one.
But I do, you know, that, that topic of, of intersection between high school and middle school, I think is something we have the system in time, we do more. I, I think our Black Student Union, I actually, I think they're, they're either came down or coming down.
This week.
Um, this week to talk to our kids. But boy, some of those kids that are, are in those upper levels of programming or robots. What a resource and models and mentors they can be for some of the younger kids. So I think that's something we should explore more.
And just, um, today I heard from a female friend who had done her first ever pretty serious car repair. And she's a very avid Lego hobbyist and everyone was saying, you know, wow, that's amazing. You did that all by yourself. And she said, it's just big Lego. And I was like, that's such a great way of thinking about it. It's like everything in basically engineering and physics is like big Lego, tiny Lego, right? Those really are literally the bully blocks, you know. Yeah, really great to hear about.
And so there you have your first monitoring report for fundamental four.
As one of the, as one of the, the people that helped kind of carve, carve us down to, to the number of fundamentals we have now. I have to say, I really like this fundamental as it, as it currently stands. Really, it's really getting it, stuff that we care about. So thank you all.
We, this is an actual, so we need a.
So I'd like to make a motion that we find the superintendent in compliance with, uh, fundamental four.
I second.
Um, we only have one. I don't think you have, and you're still on Zoom.
No, I didn't. Okay. Um, well, I'll ask for the ones to represent a vote first. I, I'm here in favor, please say aye. All in favor, please say aye.
Alright.
All opposed, please say nay. That passes, right? A vote from five to zero with an advisory vote for the world chamber. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Can we, we'll take about five minutes.
Great, we are back in. Back in action. I don't know. We're back. Okay. Um, we have personal governance process monitoring, just a couple of things. Um, firstly, I have board policy with us and one superintendent succession contract. Um, this is the contract for Dr. Randall's superintendent seat starting beginning of July first. And this is a contract that, that David and I were power take before to negotiate. And even so, do you do anything to add stuff?
No, we, uh, we work with Fred and we've got a pretty standard contract that we've come up with. Uh, we appreciate it for our usual discussions with, with the board. We're very happy to have completed a contract negotiation with Fred. Legal on our side was involved, legal on Fred's side was involved. And, uh, so, uh, yeah, we're, we're proud to have a contract. And I think the other follow on. That we also discovered, just to quickly go to that, is. The legal requirement around having only one superintendent at a time. And so there's a, there's a change to Donna's title for the, uh, overlapping month. To be a superintendent coach that go to, so these kind of go together.
And that's from July first to July thirty first. That, for that last month, that overlapping month. So, um, are there any questions or?
I would just, yeah, I would like to make just like a few comments because. As it's been mentioned many times, appointing the superintendent is the most important, um, aspect of a board role. And the board as a whole, after going through the process, which I think is very beneficial for a number of reasons, um, I think. And the board as a whole, after going through the process, which I think is very beneficial for a number of reasons, I think for reasons that are apparent to me, selected Dr. Rendell. Because you had, at a personal level, you, you have the admiration, respect of many in the community and you have the involvement and familiarity in the community. Um, on the other hand, I think for some, there is perhaps a reflect because we're in difficult times as a district. We've had enrollment attrition. I think there's questions about what it means for differentiated learning and what in practice academic rigor looks like when it manifests in the curriculum. And I don't see it as an endorsement personally of the board of continuing with the way, with, with the path that things are. I think at any time that there's a change, there's an opportunity for reevaluation and reassessment and also COVID. I think COVID has taught us that what can be seen very like the most prudent course of action at a given time, I mean, to take China's zero COVID response. Like in hindsight, very quickly, the data can suggest that it isn't the most prudent. And that we need to take these opportunities to reflect. And as part of the contract, I know part of it is a community engagement plan. And I believe and very hopeful that sometimes the person that's best able to understand the community and listen to the community is someone who's been embedded in the community so long and doesn't need to take the time to come up to speed to sort of know who to reach out to and who to talk to. But I just wanted to preface that I'm, I'm very optimistic going forward, but I do see it as still a, a time to, to reflect and to sort of reassess. And that isn't just sort of blindly sort of following, you know, sort of inertia.
And do you have any questions?
Yeah, well, thank you, David and Lady Ty for doing this for the board. And I'm really excited that we're at this point. And I just want to clarify, um, with dawn of change and role of superintendent coach, it is not the same as on page two of the four of executive coaching. So yes, they're different things. And just to make a point of clarification for it, then I do need to take two votes, even though they are related, you'll need to take two, two action items.
Any other questions, comments about the specifics of the contract?
So I would just really quickly like to thank Lady Ty for her work on this. The, the, as, as president, the amount of work to do is probably 10x what you see in the boardroom. And I think this time around was probably even more than that. Dealing with COVID and all the other issues that, that we were in, in the midst of. So, uh, thank you very much for your, your, your just remarkable leadership and compassion and passion in making, making this process happen. I think it shows real caring for the community and caring for the outcome that's best for our students. So thank you, Lady Ty, for your leadership on this.
You are welcome. And likewise, thank you, David. It was super helpful to have someone who's gone through this process before and has that kind of visceral knowledge of it. And I really appreciate your input as well on this. And just thank you to the community as a whole, because this was actually a really great process to be part of, I think. Like, I feel like people feel like they've been heard and like people feel like people feel really united in a way that they maybe didn't coming out of COVID. It's, you know, the sort of crazy landscape that we have right now. Um, so I think we're in really good shape to be moving forward with our transition of leadership. So, thank you so much. Do I have a?
I would like to move that we approve the contract with Dr. Rendell as published in the board agenda.
Second. Student representative? All in favor of, instead of asking question first, all in favor of approving the contract as published? Please say aye, starting with student representative. Thank you. Board members?
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. That passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you. And on the next one?
And I would move, we approve the superintendent succession title change for the overlapping month as published.
Second. Okay, all in favor of approving the superintendent title change for that one month? Please say aye, beginning with our student representative.
Aye.
Board members? I think like a conductor's baton. And all opposed, please say nay. That also passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you all very much. I am looking forward to signing that contract at the end of this meeting. That is what we've got for governance process monitoring. So now we are moving on to this superintendent report.
So this was an item that we had moved from a previous superintendent report, just because it had got lengthy. And so we have Director Prescott and Assistant Director Williams here to walk the board through this presentation on the High Capical Services. It's an update and the items that are attached and described here are also available on, on the website and have been presented to other groups within our purview. The Superintendent Teaching and Learning Advisory has seen this as well as the High Cap Advisory.
I have family emergency.
Oh, okay.
That is postponed.
Alright, they will be seen in the mirror.
But all, all families K5 and all teachers K5. Receive both the video and the slide.
Got it. Alright, take it away.
Alright. And so because this was done in April and it was then sent out to everybody, including you. I believe you had it on a Friday update and then received the email that went out as well. I'm happy to go through kind of slide by slide. And if you haven't seen this before, but if you have watched the video and seen the slide deck, I don't want to be redundant, repetitive and take time for something that you don't want or need.
I reviewed it. So I, I mean, we do a nutshell or review, but I, I have some questions, but.
Alright.
I think since we're doing a meeting, it'd be good to, if you can pull out the changes.
Sure.
Yeah.
Anybody else that wants the full presentation or, yeah, just kind of highlights of what has changed? Okay, um. Let's see, I'm trying to figure out which one is our most pertinent here. Um. Okay, and is it? Oh, actually, stay on this one for a second. I'll just explain. Um, so really, the objectives of the update were to connect our process to the law. So going back into what we legally need to provide and how we provide those services. Um, to kind of talk about the evolution of our process, to share our initial qualification data, but this does not have our appeal data and our newly identified students. So that update will be posted to the website. Um, then I provided a few comparative examples just to, to see like if our students who tested and their results were put into other systems and their identification processes, what would have happened? Um, and then communication to families, like I said, I have to postpone the High Cap Advisory update for Monday and then we're looking at next steps. So we've had the question come up about national percentile rate and local percentile rate. And this data, this slide in itself is not used for anything. This was just to give a quick example, because oftentimes we hear that, you know, a family will, will come to me and say, my child scored in the 94th percentile. They, they need something different than what is happening in their current classroom. And this is just to demonstrate that students who nationally, so let's take the grade two Iowa math. Students who may have scored in the 99th percentile nationally. Actually, if we compare them to Mercer Island students, some will be in the 91st percentile. And it's, it's because of the nuance within that 99th percentile that yes, nationally, they're 99th percentile. Locally though, compared to their peers, they're not necessarily 99th percentile. So we do not use the local percentile in any way to identify students, because that would be more restrictive. Because if I use the 91st percentile, that is lower than the 99th percentile. So this is just to show, you know, I, I hear from parents, um, you know, my, my kid is, is high, they're above average, they're above the 76th percentile. But if we look, you know, dropping down to the 97th percentile on the map is the 76th percentile of students here. So that tells us a number of things. One, our students perform very well. And when we talk about how our students skew high, especially in math and quantitative domains, this is what we're talking about. Because nationally, they might be in the 97, but here amongst their peers, they're closer to average amongst their peers.
Yeah, okay. I would just add too, to reference the percentile rates. So something that a lot of people don't understand is percentile rates. So if you line to get that 100 of them, right? Where they fall is kind of their percentile rate. So the importance of Jamie's reference to that 97 versus 76 percentile rate is because in, in a lot of the curves that we use in these tests, 76 is the, the marker between above average and average. So that's sort of why she's elected to chose, to show that one in particular.
And here's a few questions.
One other thing I would just add to that is we oftentimes hear from, whether or not they're experienced educators or, or new educators, or maybe they were student teaching in different districts or, or different places, they come and it can be quite an experience when all of a sudden you realize, wow, you know, my students are really performing, you know, at a really different level than maybe I'm used to. Um, and those who have been here for a number of years, you know, they're just used to that level of student and, and, and their performance and academic abilities. And so I think it also speaks in its testament to our educators, who I think oftentimes adapt and teach at some of the higher ends of standards, if not above standard in many ways, as just the typical operational strategies in classrooms. And so there is a, there's a natural skew. That's definitely created some challenges at times, particularly I think about some of our math classes where sometimes maybe the rigor of our algebra class in high school might be something that would be way more advanced than a student might participate in somewhere else. And so we've had, oftentimes have difficult conversations around, you know, what does that mean for that student who is performing with the standards, but it's not the same level that many of their peers are, are performing at. But I think my main takeaway from this, this, my statement here is that our teaching tends to also skew, I would say, towards the higher end of standards than you might see in other classrooms.
Can I clarify that?
Sure.
I really like that because I think parents really need to hear that. So just by looking at this, then people are saying, well, they're putting our kids at a deficit because they are scoring high on a national level. But because our Mercer Island, now they're at the 87th percentile, so they're not getting the same support and opportunities as though if they were scored on a national level, right? So then we tend to go for the local, a national, a local percentile rate. But what you're saying is that because the, the traditional kind of services and kind of level math that they would have bought, you know, is already higher, is already, right? I think that's, that's where I have a good distinction.
Writing, you know, I see heavily like the criticism on some of the writing of our students and the critique to make them better. You know, in, in perhaps in a different school or a different setting, they might be right on grade level, but they may be really, you know, getting pushed or whatnot, or our student is getting a, a three here. That could be a four somewhere else, but it's because there is some, there, there's a certain amount of adjustment that happens pedagogically just because of the students we have in our classroom.
So, yeah, I learned a term recently in screening, which is standard nine, standard nine deviation, right? Um, and if one takes, and, and that's the standard, right? The only thing that doesn't follow that is atypical, non-standard. Um, and I think there's a good reason for that, right? Uh, because what one is interested in is not ranking the peers, but when you're so many deviations away from the norm that the coursebook and the course materials that is centered for that norm statewide nationally is no longer appropriate. Um, and so I would push back a little bit about, well, you know, the standard gen ed classroom is more advanced. Yes, that is. But I think what is required under the law, what the norm is when it comes to standard deviations and, and the impact of that on curriculum, I think is the reason for differentiated meaningful education. Going through the matrix, for instance, we assign eight points. So the standard deviation, right, is around 96th percentile for COGAP, which gets, you know, a five, right, on here. We have certain things that are eight points for 140 plus or the 99th percentile plus. From what I can tell, when you're looking at that eight points, that's like the outside equivalent of a one eight. Like you're not even, like, you're in the one one hundredth of one percent. And so like, it almost seems that that's meaningless, that's noise, like, why are we, you know, you know, aborting that? The real question is how many standard deviations are you away from the norm? Such that the, the coursebook that is geared for the norm and the course materials are no longer appropriate. And then like however many kids that is, however many percentage, that's what is required for differentiated education, both practically, I think philosophically, and also legally.
So I think I'll just respond to your matrix questions. And the matrix wasn't developed by us initially. It was developed by two experts in the region of integrated and talented education. So those numbers were assigned by them and not by us. Um, so I just want to say that because I think that's an important point to have, that we arbitrarily choose those that as the experts in the data surrounding that and the assessments designated for that.
There's a range of expert opinion, but I, I, I.
Yeah, and I think there's a nuance there too. I, I think I see where, I certainly hear what you're saying. I think the nuance is in the curriculum and instructional materials themselves and how much, I mean, we certainly have core. It's approved by you as a board, brought through, um, the process. Uh, this is a great time to highlight the, um, the core adoption going on right now. In conference room C, you know, that's part of why we're constantly looking for or trying to refresh our instructional materials, but remembering that it's not just the core set, it's also the supplemental materials. It's also the other, um, knowledge and expertise that's brought in to the classroom from the teacher. So I definitely say that if it was just the only thing you can teach is what the district provides you in the core, I think that I, I, I can completely see that. I think that's where our teachers then are bringing in other materials. They're going through grant processes to bring in other things. And I think the new frontier for sort of math in particular is similar to what we did with letters. Um, is what do we do to professionally develop and help our teachers grow as mathematicians? Just as we have literacy. The literacy adoption this year, and you're going to hear about this in two weeks, I won't steal this thunder. But the sophistication of the literacy adoption this time compared to seven years ago, because of the, the collective knowledge that's been built, I mean, you'll be able to talk about it in two weeks.
Well, I would argue frankly that both themes have, I mean, it is so different than it was nearly a decade ago when we adopted our last materials. Um, just sitting in those sessions with those teachers, but yeah, as, that's sort of what I was going to do in shameless pledges for a few next year. If you all look at it at any point. So in those processes, that's part of our conversation in terms of how can you level up and level down as is necessary? And also what is the depth of knowledge that's required to understand? There are two avenues for supporting learners who are atypical in either direction, which is acceleration. Or you might need to do some intervention or alternatively you may need to do some additional depth, right? There should have both looks of that, um, knowing sort of surface level stuff can look one way, I think, as we try to accelerate kids. But depth of knowledge is super important in making sure that they end up being successful in the long run in life, right? Because surface knowledge will only get us so far. So that's part of what we addressed in whole part for adoption, since we've been looking at those materials. Uh, depth of knowledge and the ability to intervene with kids and/or go about level as is necessary for those working students.
So for the current. So for the current, I'm sorry, do the current uh, math textbooks all have like sort of a little bit of flecked both into them, sort of like additional material?
Yes and no. Um, so much has changed since the, since we last adopted, um. I, I think that there's the knowledge in education is greater around how to support learners at all levels, so. Uh, there's definitely a lot more about student centers, which we will talk about when we do the adoption process. Um, because we have done so much work in literacy and identifying early student focused drive in that work. There is a passion and desire in all teachers, uh, as well as us to get that same sort of level of worth for kids in math. Because then it can be truly differentiated within our classrooms. Um, some of them are already doing some of that work in a fantastic way, but yeah, the curriculum app offers the ability in a much more expanded way than it used to. So that's one of the deficits people have felt about math expressions is it doesn't span the need of all of our other staffs.
I, I think also another case might be when students can, just as a, as an example, when the students reach calculus. We, we get it typically twelfth grade. You could do a survey of schools and we find some kids getting a, you know, tenth grade, eleventh grade, twelfth grade. Sometimes as early as ninth grade on the east coast. So, so. For our kids, if we start out at a very high math efficiency. And yet our calculus is still occurring at the same time as national averages, that seems a little. Skewed incorrectly that we. Are, are we not accelerating when we should, are we not taking advantage of that? Passion in math early on in elementary school and ensuring it's accelerated through all the grades?
I think it's definitely. It's definitely something to look at, I think the changes we've made in middle school in particular is going to set. A course for more students who will likely. Take geometry before they finish eighth grade, which means I think more students. Theoretically, if they stay on that path, would take calculus even sooner, I think even just that small adjustment. Where does that apply to elementary? I think we have to bring in the adoption. See where this um, falls, look at our students, look at our cluster groupings, and then see where this goes from there. Uh, I don't think there's a door closed on it at all, I think that, that's probably for, for consideration as we're moving forward. Um, with literacy as well, now we're starting to see some students really. It's, you know, excel and, and take off in literacy, and we oftentimes think about it as well. You can give a student harder, but you know, reading material that's a little easier. Um, it's not, I mean, there's a real science to teaching students how to read too, that is oftentimes overlooked, and so I think. Um, both of them are certainly on my mind in terms of, of, you know, opportunities for students, but. Um, you know, I guess what, you know, that's, that's what we have to look at.
Yeah, and data, I think is a good part of that, that was one of the priorities of both teams is having data mechanisms, obviously we're flopped with literacy already. Uh, but we need more with math as well.
Uh, I think one of the things to, to keep in mind, and I bolded it here just to, to point it out. Is that districts are required and the law says we have to identify our most highly capable students. And so thinking about that in the context of several slides ago, where. We showed that our students do tend to skew high. And so then as we're looking at our most highly capable students, then that likely is, is shifting height as well. Um. I also want to point out that we don't do just a cut number, um, there is a, a robust process where. We, we take all the student data, put it into the identification matrix. And then we have a multidisciplinary committee that goes through and looks for anomalies, looks at. Different classifications and, and coatings of students to see have, are they receiving special services? Are they, have they been designated ELD, have they, are they on a five oh four? Um, they go through all of those things, they look at other data, so we have um. Uh, a program that we use called Home Room, they go through and they can see. Every student's entire data profile and look at that and see like, are there some outliers scores, are there things that are showing to be inconsistent? That need another glance, and then they have a committee that reviews that. Um, and that is before even the initial letters go out. And so it isn't like the ease of a spreadsheet and a pumpout and a bunch of letters. Uh, there are lots of eyes on lots of data. In order to make just the first level decision, let alone the, the secondary for appeals. Um, you will likely hear, um, you know, these two codes going through and to go to the next one. Uh, code thirty-two and code thirty-three, and somebody today in our registrar meeting asked. How do you come up with those names? And really it's because that is what's in our senior system, so our student data. Uh, system where we put, we have inputs in and it works with our student management system. Uh, that's what they code, so literally when our registrars go to code kids. They put in code thirty-two or code thirty-three depending on where they're receiving services, and then it's code thirty-four when they get to high school. Uh. So the matrix, um, this is the revised matrix. Um, any student who scored a ten or above in any given domain qualifies for code thirty-two services. So those services are provided in their regular classroom. By their teacher, um, their teacher has the support of an inclusionary instructional coach. So she has spent this year kind of priming them and providing professional development for them. And then next year she is a hands-on resource to be able to push in, to be able to model, to co-teach, to co-plan. Um, and provide opportunities for those students to have their needs met in their regular classroom. Then students who demonstrated need basically holistically, so they need something in the verbal learning domain, the quantitative and math domain. And they've done very well in science and they're creative thinkers in any combination of those things. Um, those students are served in a unique classroom, so that's code thirty-three. So when people talk about like, well, you, you eliminated the high cap program. No, no, we still have a separate class, so for some students, they need that homogenous group of like peers. For other students, they didn't need the entirety of that, but they need some peers who qualify and have similar academic or aptitude profiles. They will be grouped together. Uh. Then, so this, the, the data on the next slide, like I said, will be updated, uh, because we do have new qualifiers based on appeals. Um, third, slide thirteen and fourteen, uh, just walk through kind of two different districts comparisons and. Uh, what, how our students would have done, um, using their, their model. Um, some added data value, so here's a people's slide fifteen. And. There's some data beyond just identification that I think is really valuable for teachers. Um, so some students struggled on all aspects of the testing except the torrents. So they were off the charts on torrents, they were, you know, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percentile. But got almost no points or got no points in any other domain. That's really important for a teacher to have. Right, that perhaps their math and literacy scores and abilities. Are not there yet, but leverage that creative thinking to foster the development in those areas. Uh, some students who didn't qualify for any services scored in the ninety-sixth plus percentile on the science assessment. Again, that's an interesting access point for students who need to develop literacy and math abilities. And then, um, some students who qualified for code thirty-two services in one domain scored in the ninety-eighth percentile on the science assessment. So they're gonna get code thirty-two services in, in one area. But it's also good for the teacher to know that if there's another area to bolster. Make sure to try to leverage the science and that strength so that they uh, can help them learn and grow. So kind of where, where have we been over, um, the last several years, we have the high cap review, we were. Uh, recommended to revise our identification process, consider other service delivery models. We had high cap advisory for a few years, uh, we started with distinguishing between gifted, academically talented and highly capable. We identified additional components for qualification. And then as learning services, we researched, studied, vetted potential service delivery models and identification processes. We engaged in some deep reflection and adjustments following last spring's process. We have had professional learning targeted for all third and fourth grade teachers to build capacity to. Even the work, diversity of students in a gen ed setting. And uh, provided a year-long of professional learning for K five staff on EDL. And then where are we, what do we learn? Um, the two-phase process from spring, last spring, didn't provide a whole picture of each student, so we quickly. Went back to how we had initially designed to do that, and we, we test all students who are universally tested on all areas. Um, student data, student data is the best indicator of the services we should provide. Um, so there is an identified need for both holistic services and domain-specific services. And then the value of being into conversations with our community, um, we had a student forum, a staff forum, a parent forum. We had Google surveys, a thought exchange, um, curious notes on, on feedback and emails. And so here's where we are. Uh, the data was entered into the matrix and I cross-checked, so I used our old matrix, which only identified the two domains, and then I used our new matrix. To make sure that the, the level of accuracy, accuracy that we didn't miss any students, so who would have previously qualified but didn't. Uh, I made sure that we were still ending up with um, students who in the old matrix would have qualified also qualified in the new matrix. Um, the multidisciplinary committee identified students for services using all data points. We have two different ways in which high cap services will be delivered, and we're gonna roll up one year at a time. So we will have one, next year's third graders will be the first class to have. Uh, code thirty-two and code thirty-three. Other grades from fourth grade on will continue in their current model, and that's not gonna change, we're not gonna change, change the course mid, mid year. Um, and then we've been having staff in the sessions. Um, at the time that I did this, we did not yet know where the high cap class for next year's third graders would be for the code thirty-three services. And we now know that that's going to be at Lake Ridge. So, um, we are now in the process of determining student clusters, so for students who. Qualify at code thirty-two, either in math or reading. Those students are identified by each school. And the principals are working with their teacher teams to then group them together in classes so that they have like peers. With the same similar strengths, they will also have other peers who don't have those strengths. But they will have a cluster of students to be able to work with in small groups. And a project and to engage with as they need perhaps additional acceleration, rigor, depth of complexity.
A question regarding the roll up and sort of the decision to. Um, centralize it in Lake Ridge rather than West Mercer, I think one of the things out of the twenty eighteen survey, although. I think it was incomplete and insufficient in my view, but one of the things that came out is Wes Mercer was perceived as having. The stronger of the two programs. So to many people, it seemed a little bit perplexing that the decision to. Do only move for one school, that it would be Lake Ridge rather than Wes Mercer, and wondering what the thought process was when it came to that.
And to add to that question, looking at qualifiers, why is it not the school that has the most? I mean, why is it not Island Park, I mean, just this year, um, so the fewer, fewer students are moving. So just to, why, why is it Lake Ridge?
I, I can say that there, part of it was the attrition of other staff members and that. The experience level of when we rolled it up this year with third grade. Um, the teach, that we have, the more experienced there, we, we didn't have the same person. Um. At Wes Mercer any longer who was gonna teach the third, so we, we really have two teachers who were there, and so that's why it started. Um, uh, at Lake Ridge, and then for just continuity sake, because that same third grade teacher is still there. That's really where that decision came, we also then knew that as we start clustering students. Regardless of whether or not you're at Wes Mercer or, or Lake Ridge, you could still start the benefit. It doesn't mean that a teacher might not transfer schools. Um, potentially if a teacher wants to continue there, they may or may not, that will kind of depend on that.
Because the, the question to many is, Mr. Baxter came in, is it Wes Mercer, has been part of High Cap and Wes Mercer for a long. Period of time, same with Ms. Burke, and we both are going to globals in Kansas City and have been instrumental with destination imagination. So to many it seems self apparent that Wes Mercer would be the school who just wanted to be retained. Rather than perhaps more temporary considerations of. You know, one teacher in third grade and where they were located.
And in future years, as staffing stabilizes and we're not having to. Not bring back staff and where they are, it could shift buildings, it could go to Northwood if, if that's where. We felt that the strength was there, the reason why it not just shift into Island Park, which is kind of piggyback onto that because there's more students. Is. That's not where we have the, the teachers who have been doing most of the training over the years. And so we'd have to either ask them to voluntarily transfer to a different school or involuntarily transfer them, but. Involuntarily transfer them just for that, um. I, I, I think our labor partners would, would probably have a hard time for us just bouncing staff around. Um, between schools basically.
Additionally, as they roll up, um, we have four experienced fourth and fifth grade teachers at West and Lake Ridge and not at Island Park, so. By moving third grade to Island Park, then we would need to figure out the next year, and we for sure don't wanna be doing multiple bounces. So we, we already have in place teachers who are longstanding teachers of High Cap and fourth and fifth grade.
Can I just rewind to a moment, you, you said that the, um, the two-phase process didn't work well at, at kind of like identifying like. Well, holistic student strengths, I don't remember what he said, can you just explain a little bit more about that and like how the process is gonna change going forward?
Yeah, you're taking in the two-phase part, sure, so the um, two-phase part was. Uh, the challenge with that is that we didn't, we don't have a holistic view of the children, because if we only take one part of that. If we only take one, either the whole gathering of Iowa, right, as we split them apart. There are two very different assessments, so if you only take one of those, and you're only getting a piece of those students, and you might. Test them on the next piece of it and get an entirely different view of that child. So we needed to bring those two things back together, and I think that the outside of just knowing that we have that information about kids, the other side of it is an equity issue, right? So as we look to assess all of our students. There could very easily be kids that we necessarily separate those things out as separate entities, and we only phase in qualifiers over the rest of time. I think you would see our numbers drop drastically if we continue to phase those things. Um, because we would be eliminating kids who potentially scored highly on the other assessment that there were opportunities to have it.
Okay, thank you, so that change. Was enacted this year, so last spring twenty twenty-one is when we had two phases, we eliminated that. Um, starting this year, and so all of the qualifiers and identification from this year are losing the whole picture.
Um, just as you, as, as this roll up moves forward over the next few years, I would really encourage. You all to think about a catch your name and code thirty-two. That doesn't mean we have to use that in the district, and it's a lot easier just to kind of sell a concept to both parents and kids, if it's like. This is the green trees group, and the blue oceans group or whatever, you know. Um, also for some of us who know that there are great numbers, I'm constantly like thirty-two.
Um. With, uh, I, I assume that we're at twenty-five for the holistic, and that's our youth in elementary schools, such as the third class, is. With appeals, are you anticipating that it's gonna be over the cap for one class?
Oh, I actually go back and look at the exact numbers, um, they haven't, they're not yet in our. Uh, elementary worksheet to, to see where the numbers fall, so we can't, we don't have enough time to come back to that.
Because I have a little bit of, um. A little, I can add some more, because of students who qualified. Um, this year, who either have just moved in or who haven't qualified. Um, our numbers going into fourth grade were already gonna be quite high. And then we have this kind of weird bubble in fifth grade, so we actually already allocated an additional staffing for that. So that it could be a common, there might be a combination class in there. Um, uh, the Lakers team is still working on all of those dynamics, but. We have the flexibility within the staffing, it just might not be a pure third grade class, there might be some three, four combinations.
Which has been pretty typical in the High Cap classes because the, the numbers just don't always bear.
I was just, yeah, I just wanted to know what the strategy was.
And then there'll be, you know, we have some other. Um, you know, bubbles of students that we're looking at right now, and you know, anytime you have students who. Leave a school, who are second graders now gonna be third graders, they go to a different school. You then have less third graders, and so there's some shuffling of staff that automatically happens as we rebalance. Um, Ty and I were just talking to Mr. Hoffman today about, um, something that, um. Mr. Wolf and and Mr. Hop will have to work on here with some anomalies.
But I really appreciate that we, you know, one of your on-page slide, that it seems. But we value leading to conversation with the community, and that we've really heard this in the community and have adjust accordingly. And so this is, so the next two slides, you know, where we're at, what we learned and where we're at, where we are. As we're thinking and. I appreciate the difficulty of keeping things moving, but then where we're going, I guess I I would like to encourage where we're going with the High Cap Advisory. That we push it further and making sure that. We are, uh, as we're doing this, we're still checking in the business advisory group, so that we don't end up like how before. We're making changes and then then we create an advisory, uh, group, and then they're like, no, that's not how it is. So that that would be my encouragement to really, um, convene the High Cap Advisory. To think about the purpose and that the re-shaping. Uh, and put emphasis on that before we actually roll out anything.
I guess my my quote, all of pushing that is like, how are you thinking about reshaping slash repurposing?
Yeah, either way, go ahead.
So there there have been other groups who have come, um, and specifically the DEI and PTA have had. Um, conversations with us about how they can be more involved. So. Um, one of the things that often happens with either committees or advisories is you have people who sit in a room and talk about. Problems of practice or who are looking at problem-solving solutions, and. After they leave that room, the knowledge left with them in their bodies that it is not disseminated. Um, and so thinking about the High Cap Advisory, thinking about what happened, um, in March of last year. Um, and that we had teacher voices, administrator voices, we had parents, but that messaging wasn't along the way getting communicated. You know, and and I reflected, you know, and I, I feel like I did umpteen board reports, and every different committee that met, I was. Plugging, you know, here's what we're doing, here's what the process is. So still trying to figure out like, what's the best way to get information to parents in a modality that works for them, that they can digest and understand. And it's not the rumor mill, right? Like, they're limited in the High Cap. Whoa, wait, no, we never said that, who said that, where did you hear that? And so in thinking about reshaping and repurposing, trying to figure out, what are the other groups that exist out there? Where they have had success in reaching out to the community and finding ways to communicate and really. Find the salient information that families, parents need to know. And so, you know, we haven't made a decision yet on whether, you know, linking with DEI, PTA, a combination of the two. Um, having its own separate entity, you know, we don't want to duplicate efforts, we want to find ways to streamline it and make sure. More people are more aware as we go.
I think we had, um, I think to the different learners committee, that even after. The aims web was put into play and we adopted the materials, it still existed for a couple more years before it then kind of melded in with. The teaching and learning advisory, um, and that could happen, but for the time being, it's definitely going to continue to serve a purpose. I think we're, we're talking about new membership, we've got now new families who have been coming through, uh, who can join, we have others who may not want to be on it. Um, new, new staff members, so, um, thinking about that for sure, um, as we move forward. And then where do our PTA partners fit into this as, uh, we form that advisory as well?
I think one of the reasons that, um, the DEI, the diversity, the the superintendent's committee has been so successful is the way that it's structured in terms of. You know, the three-year, asking for a three-year commitment and people roll on at each of those times, that really has. For me, kind of carried forward and it includes more people and, you know. People roll off, you're not hearing the same voices all the time. Um, I I really, I mean, I think that's why our DEI. Advisories have been so successful, one of the reasons why they've been so successful is because you don't want a stagnant group. Making the same decisions, thoughts change, you know, groups of students and parents change, and I I think that's a great structure to.
Although I think your question here is, has there been any decision made by. The High Cap Advisory Committee or as, you know, sort of discussed, is it used as a means of disseminating information and getting it out to the community? Because those are two very different objectives and purposes.
Well, it's advisory, so I'm assuming it's not a decision-making authority.
Well, you can still have an advisory vote, if you well know.
So they, I mean, they, um. I think early on in the advisory, there was. There was a period of time where it was much, there was engagement, talking about, in fact, the decision to go to that two. The two-phase process was really. Of a pretty big part of the advisory's advice and recommendations.
We went forward with what we're currently doing, um, where we had the Torrens, the Colgate, and the Iowa all together. Um, that's what initially took, and then the advisory said. No, we are far more interested in looking at the creative thinkers than we are the high achievers, because high achievers. Um, isn't getting at that notion of a creative different thinker, and that's what we really are trying to.
We had defined that early on in that process, and so that's where they came out of it with that, was that we were looking at differentiating between or identifying. The students who are truly maybe gifted and talented as opposed to those that are just high achievers, there's two paths there.
And I know that's not disparate, I mean, I don't bring that up because the committee did anything wrong, I mean, that was the best thinking at the time for that group. But through reflection, um, through learning, uh, thinking about, was that in the best interest of all students? And again, that's why we're making different decisions.
I I think that that part of the question of how you connect with the community is like. It's about about like being proactive and building those connections between families and between like their school, you know, between their teachers and the families. The teachers and the parents, kids and the teachers, you know, it's like, you have to be doing that in in good times. To be able to have people listening to you when there's news or changes and so forth. So like, when I think about, um, you know, and some of the concern about like. Lake Ridge versus Wes Mercer as being the, you know, center for the code thirty-three classes. Is is that Wes Mercer has the longest history and kind of culture of High Cap classes there that has been built up over, you know, decades, right? So I think that that's that's some of the the reasons we're concerned by parents. When I think about the, not the superintendent's DEI committee, but the PTA DEI, PTA Council's DEI committee that I'm the liaison to. One of the things they've done a really great job of this, these last couple of years is, um, creating these affinity groups, you know, so for example, the AAPI. Affinity group, having a picnic, you know, like getting people to meet each other, like organizing events, so like, you know. Could we be doing something like that for for, and not just for High Cap families, right, but for like, parents whose kids love math, right? Like, and yes, I realize we also have been managing like, still with the pandemic and doing all the other things in the last couple of years, but just kind of. Going, moving forward and thinking kind of proactively about like, community building in this sort of like, slightly remodeled High Cap program, you know. Um, is that something that that, you know, there are kids who love math more than the High Cap program are receiving services, but like, that would like to know about. You know, math opportunities, you know, that kind of thing, or kids, people whose kids are really creative or in the arts, you know, like you kind of connect those. People together and then.
I think there's always a tension between advisory, uh, and, uh, what is best practice, you know, and. But then I did think the whole spirit of it is that we're going along with the community at the pace that, where they're at in understanding. Or, you know, as we alter best practices nationally to meet the needs of our community. So I think it's going to be a constant conversation and trying to figure out after reshaping and repurposing. Where does that fit inside things that people while, but you know, I guess my last comment on this whole High Cap thing is that the. Of the local percentage strength, it just makes me think now, because this is the first time I think about this, is that. It makes us, we think that we really need to up our general ed students as well, because we have so many. Of our, you know, if, um, on a national level, they're doing well, but then here, then I get eighty-five percent. Then in addition to High Cap, how are we also augmenting? But, you know, strengthening our general education, because there's so many, um, students that who are also accelerating learners. So. My thought about seeing this number, I never taught this number before, so I appreciate, you know.
Yeah, I think that the challenge for the community is we have these students in High Cap who were, who felt well-served. And then they would, yeah, they solidated math and and ELA English. And science, and they felt well-served by the time they got to high school, and they felt like they could. Take the right honors and advanced courses at high school because they were at an accelerated pace in elementary school. We then decided that we want to also get creative kids. So the holistic picture, kids who are score high on creativity as well as. And and science. And then. Take that field who perhaps didn't get identified before, are they who are adding this group? And we just want to serve them. And take away this existing program that felt like it was serving kids already, and I think that's the. That's the confusion that's going on, so the kids that were being served now are being separated into group thirty-two in the regular classroom. And group thirty-three into a separate classroom, plus the the people who score higher than Torres test.
But the students who are code thirty-two now receive no services previously.
And that that wasn't made clear, and your numbers don't make that clear, like how has High Cap changed? The message from the community is the number of High Cap courses are decreasing, not increasing. And you added this other, this extra criteria that, uh, kids seem to have to qualify for all they. Stay in the regular classroom, and so it felt like a takeaway to most people. You you're supporting kids you've never supported before, taking away services from kids you are supporting today. Right? That's the confusion that came across. Now, if this was messaged as every classroom is a High Cap classroom. That's a whole different story.
Well, I think it's that every classroom has opportunities for.
Well, that that wasn't clear, because, uh, you know, regular classroom already tells you about kids being advanced in math. And wanting the ability to accelerate, so at some some level, you've got. Kids taking math at twice the rate of other kids in the same classroom, and how that works is confusing. And I I I did hear Fred say, we're trying to put cohorts together. And how you describe that and how you talk about those cohorts is going to make a big difference. Into the, uh, into the understanding of the program and the volume of of what you're doing now.
I'm really concerned about this conversation with regards to our students now. All we're hearing from our kids is that they're stressed out, their anxiety is through the roof, and we're pushing, pushing, pushing. The parents are pushing, pushing, pushing their kids to what end? They're to to do calculus, like how many of them, like if they want to, awesome. If they don't, let's take that off their plate. Why are we pushing so hard? These kids are gonna succeed, they're going to find colleges if they want to, that are going to meet their needs. Why do we have to push them, these like seven-year-olds in second grade, to be ready to go, to be in calculus when you're twelve? If if you want to do that as a parent, then go do it, but I don't want to be a part of a school system that does that. And the fact that, you know, this Wes Mercer culture of High Cap has been so damaging to so many of our other students. And that's the problem, big sigh, right? It's damaging, we've got kids who say to other kids, I can't be friends with you anymore because I'm in High Cap and you're not. And we know what happens. And why, I mean, I think that these changes are great, and I think that we need to serve our students, but highly capable does not mean really smart. I mean, lots of highly capable kids are really smart, but lots of other kids are really smart too, and they're going to achieve and they're going to do well. And men, I mean, our kids are killing themselves, literally dying. Because we keep telling them they have to do this and this and this and this, and if you don't, you're a failure. Let's change our conversation.
So there's, there's a couple things. One, um, going back to the the number of classes that we have, I it, I can't. I can't say this anywhere clearly, we've been in the pandemic for two years, our students have not had the same level of rigor and discourse. And learning over the course of the last two and a half years that they did previously. So it is no surprise to me that our numbers would go down, if I listened to the news today and they were talking about how nationally. Students in, uh, grades like two, three, five, um, are, have dropped nine to eleven percentiles. In their, in their math scores. So it makes sense to me that if students have been struggling to learn, many of them who wouldn't turn their cameras on or. Who couldn't, weren't being supervised because mom and dad had to work, or, you know, so many reasons, they couldn't learn through the screen. Um, it it's very logical to me that, uh, we wouldn't have as many students qualifying for for needing holistic services because. As Director Laurie said, we're still working on the mental health of them. I will also say, um, today I I heard from our registrar who said that, um, a a kindergartner taking. The the Iowa portion of the, um, primary enrichment identification two weeks ago. Was sorry, and she asked why, and the student said, I'm not going to qualify, and I'm going to be in really big trouble. And so she pushed on a little bit and said, well, tell me more, like, what what do you mean, you you know? And she said, well, I didn't get much sleep last night because I had to do my homework, and. Um, I didn't do all my homework, and I know now that I didn't do well in the test, and my mom said I had to do well in the test. And so what happened, the the registrar went to the teacher and was like, no, you're giving her her homework. And the teacher then talked to the student and was, no, the parent was giving them homework out of a workbook, preparing them for the Iowa assessment. That happens so often here, I know people say, my kid, I better put my kid. But I'm telling you, it happens all the time, and to have a kindergartner at night doing a workbook. She's in tears, feeling like she, she is inadequate and she's failing. And she's not doing well enough, clearly it's not the kid who's like, hey, I want math, but I want to be out of this, I'm doing all these great things. It's the pressure, and then for her to be doing a failure after taking a test at age six. Like, those to me are incredibly harmful stories, and I've had kids who wet their pants because they're nervous, and they're third graders. I, you know, kids who have been promised puppies, and I know it sounds absurd, but that is what the kids are coming into the testing. We see the kids as they're testing. And, you know, it may not seem, they might seem okay when they leave the door, um, to go and and take the test. But but we see what's happening to them as they're shaking, as they're crying, as they need to pause every couple of minutes because their brain can't think. So I do caution us, and I appreciate Director Laurie bringing it up. We need to have a balance of really challenging our students, and when we talk about acceleration, that is not the only way to meet the needs. Of a ungifted or highly capable student, that is one of many. There's also depth of knowledge, depth and complexity, there are ways in which you can, uh. You know, synthesize multiple elements and come up with something without going faster, sometimes you go deeper. And so I want to make sure that we don't prescribe to a singular methodology of how we meet the needs of our highly capable students. It doesn't just mean that.
Although the law does require enhanced instruction and accelerated or or enhanced learning and accelerated instruction. I forget, but it does require acceleration, I mean, the law.
I I'll also push back a little on the, um, some of the analogies using here. Um, in sports, you know, we 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 have a tiered system in sports. And regularly, kids don't make, you know, varsity. And that happens all the time, and some of these theories start pretty early, and you have to explain that to kids. Right? Um, you you didn't make it, and no matter what my parents did to me, I was not going to do well in due. I just, I just, I just wasn't. And, uh, so that has to be explained, and I have to accept that. Um, when there there are, there's, you know, academic awards, valedictorian is academic. If the rules of valedictorian are changed to be a combination of academics and athletics. You're not going to be a valedictorian, and that has to be explained to the kids, right, when you change those rules. And no matter what happens, you're going to have those type of failures. In in some classrooms, be a different color. What are you going to do to me in South Dakota where I'm the only brown kid? You have to explain that to me, and the teacher. You have to explain that to me and the teacher has to take that off. Right? So that same is true with academics. When you have the kid who is being mentally struggling and is sobbing. That's, that's a conversation that has to be had. And because you can avoid it in academics by dismantling a high cap system. We're not doing the same dismantling in academics. And we're not doing the same dismantling with these, with segregation again.
But we're not dismantling, I don't understand.
Well, that, that's what you're saying, but not.
High achievement athletes have killed themselves this year. It's so different. It's when people and parents are pushing their kids and.
No, it's, so I think everybody, it is right, even if there's a lot of stress. And um, but as an institution, I don't think the conversation has been, our conversation has simply been how are we meeting the needs of our different learners? And how are we creating opportunities for our different learners? Reducing, um, when we talk about equity or reducing stress by artificially lowering standards or given options, they're not reduce stress. People will have different things to be stressed about. That's a different conversation. So I don't think we should muddle the two together.
Yeah.
As a board, we just have to think, these are our different profile of students. Are we having enough options for students to do it? Whether they're stressed, that's the, actually the, the great thing that we're doing, the different tiers of counseling that we're, so we're giving them toolkit and we're giving strategies to deal with. Because ultimately, when they go to college, they're, you know, whether we uh artificially lower standards enough, they're gonna have to deal with the world's stress. So, but I think sometimes it gets muddled between, because we're both, you know, there is, yeah, it's unfortunate that people are pushing kids. But then that's a, that's a personal parenting that has nothing to do with us. We just create opportunity. Just because they create opportunities doesn't mean that we are aiding, you know, a stressful environment. People will find different ways to compete, no matter how you lower the bar. I will tell you that.
Oh, I wanted to say that, that in, in, in the, around the question of, of like pressure on students, you know, um, that the new screen process and then being able to provide services to code thirty-two kids, I think is actually gonna do something to lower that stress. Because it's like, you can still qualify for, for services in, you know, your one area that you're really good in. You can still get the support that you need. It's not all or nothing. Like I, I do, I do see how this is really helping kids that otherwise would've just been left completely out of these inter-year programs in the past. Like, like as my kids were growing up, they had two friends who were sisters. And I know I told this story before, but like one sister failed to get into high cap every year in one, one of the two categories. And so she basically took on the identity, well, like my sister's the smart one and I'm not, right? And so that's a kid who would now be served, right, which is great. And then I've seen other families where a kid has left the district because they couldn't get what they needed. And this is years ago, right, but they couldn't get what they needed. They were behind in one subject and very, very advanced in another, right, another one or two, right? And those students were not served before. So this is more inclusive. This is serving more students at, at a more regular level, like more personalized, right? All of that is that, I do agree that there was a big kind of communications kind of mismatch, let's just say, you know, like when this was rolled out. And, and it's hard because this stuff is complicated, right? Like it's very hard to sit down with a group of parents and be like, well, like here's the matrix and here's the, the, like you're very top of it. But like, here's the matrix and here's how this would've worked if we applied this other filter to it, right? Like it's, I, like, I, I don't end you trying to explain this stuff and kind of get the word out there. But I, but I do think that, that, you know, that we are serving more students.
I, I think the, the separation of holistic, without question, uh, to your point, is a good thing in that regard. I think there is a question if deviating from the standard deviation is sensical um, when it comes to providing an appropriate education for each student in that.
I think that's the opposite of what she said.
Well, if you look at the percentiles and what that means for standard deviation, to qualify. And, and the subjects.
She said that they go with the national because they don't wanna, that kids aren't gonna lose because they're huge.
We know, if you look at what you need to get the points, it's scoring ninety-six percentile on two tests just to qualify individually, right? And then holistically, you have to do that, I mean, we can have a separate.
Well, that's more aggressive because I think what you're saying is.
Where we're deviating are the standard deviation, right? Because standard deviation is the top six percent, I believe, like the most.
So when we, um, yeah, um. So we combine academic achievement with aptitude. So that's where we have the balance of COGAT and Iowa. When we do that, a student could demonstrate incredibly high aptitude. And they could, their standard age score could be a hundred and forty-five and they could get eight points there. Then they can score as low as like eighty-fourth percentile in the Iowa math and still qualify for services. And so we don't, I, I get nervous when people talk about like a, a cut percentile. Like you have to get ninety-six percent in the ninety-six percentile because that isn't true. You have to get a combination of ten points based on multiple assessments.
Yeah, and it's harder to like jump through consecutive hurdles and to get the minimum. Because as I said, I mean, like to get the full eight points, we're not even talking ninety-nine percentile, it's ninety-nine percentile plus, right? Which from what I can tell, when I try to look at how many standard deviations we are away, is I said, strikes me that we're looking at basically the equivalent of a one-eighty LSAT, which is theoretically possible, but in just the raw numbers that are getting those eight points for some of these tests, like either in our district or just nationally, seems to be managing with you. There's some.
But eight isn't the only way to get.
Understood, but, but it's cumulative points. So like, I mean, why even have a number that doesn't seem to give any meaningful actionable data?
But there's five, six, and seven also.
So, well, that's why the TTCT and the science is designed to be helpers, not hindrances. So those, I think that was another lesson that we learned is that those shouldn't be disqualifiers. Those can only be qualifiers. I, I think we even had a conversation about that. I think even over the summer, so that those can enhance, not hinder and that, that it gives more benefits.
And we can go through the majors, but I think you get to the, to the holistic, right? It's averaging ninety-six percentile. And then it can, we still need to get eighty-seven percentile or I forget what it was, on like Torrance test, which seems to be some of the random noise if one looks at it. Anyways.
So what, ninety-six percent now, not.
Individually in holistic, I think is good, but in terms of the percentiles that we set, that matters. And just saying that it's a matrix and that there's multiple ways to get points, to me does not solve the fundamental question, which is what, when it comes to differentiation, what's the standard deviation from the norm where kids then need specialized services? And, and, and I think that like breaking it up from holistic within, you know, topic and domain specific makes a lot of sense. But I don't think that's the full story. The, the story is where are we setting that threshold?
Well, and that could be a, maybe a future study session or whatnot. The challenge on that is, I just don't know if, in my opinion, students don't learn at a rate that can be broken down to, to that nuance. Like in terms of their performance in the classroom, how they're benefiting day in and day out, what's coming at them that just the taking a look at standard deviations and then equating that to a level of differentiation. I just think there's too many other variables that are also part of that. And so the differentiation then has to be a constant evolution by teachers um, as they're interacting with the learning moment. What the, the, the matrix is designed to do is to at least determine who are our most highly capable, who are gonna benefit from, we believe, holistic services and who then might benefit from single service areas. With the full understanding that teachers all the time come back and say, I have a student who, they're only qualified here, but I'm seeing a different picture here. We then reassess, teachers nominate students the following year so that we can adjust. And the same being true of students who have been um qualified, and this can go back to the past, as holistic, get into it, and it's just not a good fit. And it's not because they're intellectually assessed not there, that, that it's just, they're, they're not benefiting from it. And I think to your point, Director Dean, at the end of the day, it's not about holocausts. It's about the, it's a both and. And it's about constantly knowing that our students are growing, they're changing. Um, and we have to adapt there too, to meet their needs as we go through socially, emotionally, but you're not.
I was gonna kind of add in, I was, I'm a person who has always kind of been more accelerated in English, but with math and math and math standard. And so reading through this, I went to Lake Ridge and what I remember is the high cap back then was you had tested in a separate program. So I never did that because I always needed like, just like the standard kind of help in math. But I always kind of wished I had some more like English supplement. Um, and so I think it's really great that students have the visibility to get extra help or like kind of extra challenge and bring it running. I think I could benefit from that when I was younger. And so that's just one thing that, looking through all this, I really appreciate that. Um, and uh, I appreciate that we can have it for. I think a lot of students kind of are in that same boat, so.
And are you heading where you want to head next year?
I am, yes, yes, I am.
It, it might also be interesting, we talked about pro, student profiles. So if somebody's in your code thirty-three in this holistic classroom, what, what does a person look like in terms of academically? And then what type of stories has that person got on COGAT, IRR, and uh, the Taurus? That's, that gives me a picture of what thirty-three looks like. And then there's probably multiple profiles for what code thirty-two looks like. Because you can have different uh proficiencies. And so paint like three pictures of what that looks like. And then what their academically, and then uh kind of what their scores look like. And then what their classroom they would be in looks like in each of those three cases. That, that helps people kind of, I guess, put a picture to these variety of numbers we've got going on here.
And improve the name.
I know we interrupt this, but I could really have one more question, just what kind of the student form, I'm curious what students. So the students, um, the only students who show were those who were receiving high cap services. Um, so, I mean, they, they enjoyed the services they were receiving, a couple bits talked about. Um, you know, really defining what high cap is and it's not just more work, it's not busy work. It's, you're really needing to make sure that we provide the best instruction for every student, not just more work. Um, so I heard that. Um, I mean, they, they had been in a classroom that served them well. They were students who qualified for that space and for those services. And so they were saying, it was great then.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want to show the dashboard?
Which the COVID. Um, we'll send this to you as part of the update tomorrow. We are updating the COVID dashboard to have more elements to it, more um ways that people can look at the information that's coming on, on the dashboard. Uh, we are still, of course, all wearing masks because we are still seeing some, some cases definitely not. Maybe so therefore in our schools as well. So um, since you all the letter that we sent out recently, we are still strongly recommending masks in your settings. And um, our hope, you know, our hope is that we can start to see a downward trend. So there will be a new dashboard um that will give much more information. Come soon.
Okay. Uh, next we have a consent agenda.
I mean, we have a consent agenda.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda as listed? Um, Senator, I can't hear you else.
I am.
All those, they, they, um, that passes by five to zero. Um, next we have some word, um, for reports.
Oh, sorry, announcements. Um, just a quick announcement. Um, next week at the Wassa one-ten regional awards, we are recognizing a couple of um unique groups within our community that really have supported our students. The first one is a recognition of what is called the Community Leadership Award. And I have nominated and, and it will be recognized in the Missouri Police Department um, for all of their work in supporting and serving the SRO, but in so many other ways that we have this unique situation of sharing the same boundary and how we're able to work together for a week. So we'll be highlighting that work. And then there is also a Wassa Students Leadership Award. And I will be recognizing members around the High School Black Student Union. Um, they have done phenomenal work this year and I'm really excited and pleased to have them able to attend this and use the power of it. Um, at the towards, um, next week.
Um, for announcements, inquiries and reports, legislative representative?
Nothing to me.
Nothing, okay. For, for announcements, yeah.
So one MI and the Mercy Island High School Educational Coalition for Asian-American Representatives present. They're doing an intergenerational conversation with Asian-Americans on Mercy Island. It will be on Wednesday, May twenty-fifth at seven. So the idea is to get um high school students, their parents and a panel of like three high school students, uh, three parents and three grandparents age. They come together to discuss on an intergenerational level, like what are some of the concerns that's put in here from each other? And uh, so we're still, I think they're still recruiting um, panelists who are courageous enough to, you know, share the issues and concerns we've done publicly. Uh, and so if you know anybody who might be a good fit for this, um.
You see the date is in.
It's May twenty-fifth, on Wednesday, May twenty-fifth at seven P M. But uh, it's gonna be at the community center. That was my question, is it in person or? Yeah, it's gonna be in person. I think it might uh, live streaming, but it's gonna be a, it's a hybrid event. They will be live streaming, but in person. If I remember, if you have anybody that you know, roughly.
JCC or Mercy Island.
Uh, it's a Mercy Island community event center. Obviously true. It's the same time as our regional meeting, just.
Anything else, announcements?
Sure, uh, I had the high school advisory meeting. So, yeah, I, I guess when we were there, uh, we'll say we had a shelter in place drill there. So it was a drill, but we talked about stress and anxiety, um, and we, we have to do those.
Did they give your heads out there?
They did, they did. So, so interesting, interesting items talked about. We continue on the budget discussion, you know, we, we talked about the budgets here as well. But I appreciate the fact that we, we passed our resolution and it's, it's trickling down into all the schools. Totally appreciate the level of depth and detail that this, the high school is going into understanding budget cuts. They're actually doing a lot of work, I think Ty has talked about it, to move courses into CCR, CTB designation where we get extra budget from the federal government, allowing us to preserve courses and teachers and uh opportunities for our kids. And one thing that, that's enabled because these decisions are done at the lowest levels uh, of the school district, of the district, by the principals and the teachers themselves. And those are decisions that say that the board could never be making, or would never have the capacity to make. So I, I appreciate greatly how much care is being done to make these decisions. Um, we had a discussion from the COG department chairs for science who come together and speak to the parents about what they're doing. Uh, get feedback from the parents on how the science courses are going. Um, some concerns about, as you talked about with stress, uh, some kids are doing too many science courses sometimes, obviously. And that tends to be a problem because then you fill up a course, other kids might be denied the course. And then kids who are overstressed go off the course. So as we were talking about, it, it does come with uh big penalties when you offer something that a person isn't ready for and they take it. Uh, so they're trying to figure out how to handle that. So I, I, I appreciate that as well. And then uh, there's a, a lot of time being spent understanding how meals. There's a, a lot, a lot of time being spent understanding how middle school science is preparing kids for high school science. So again, a holistic look at their, you know, ten, eighteen, twelve series of science, which is, which. Is also very important to us. And as we think about STEM. And we think about girls' interest and continuing interest in science, what they learn in middle school carries over into. High school as well, and the interest in those classes. So a lot of that is being thought about in male, female balance and that type of thing. Uh, AP courses, that's a discussion this year, how will the kids get into it? How much capacity do we have of kids getting into it? Again, I appreciate those discussions that may be breaking up opportunities available to all. Uh, finally, there was a, there, there's going to be some time spent with understanding anxiety, stress. Uh, the style of teaching that we have may or may not cause that. And again, rigor and, and op, and opportunities of courses. So a lot of what we discussed in the boardroom, and I know it was a little high intensity on HICAP. Uh, but I'm appreciative, I really appreciate seeing those discussions actually happen. Where principals and parents and teachers can actually do something about it. As opposed to us who may just do it. So, thank you very much for, uh, allowing board members to participate in. These, these, these are very, very challenging discussions. They put individuals in very precarious positions because. You know, they, they are being criticized. If you're a math teacher or an AP's teacher or. A science teacher, you, you, you're hearing very personal criticism and, and accolades. But I think those are discussions best left in private, not in open board meetings. And it's good to see that principals are actioning them and the teachers are taking the feedback. In, in a very positive way with good intent. So, uh, Walter does create a great environment for these type of challenging discussions, but I think that's our. That's a rare skill to be able to do and then build up trust with the parent community. That, uh, these will be looked at and fixed. So with, with that, I think that's all I've got for high school.
Um, I, I wanted to say that I, I recently attended the High School Musical and was surprised to end up on stage. I did not know anything about it. I thought I was volunteering to make a spell of words from the audience, but I was actually on stage for a significant portion of the musical. Um, together with Mr. Baxter and with a, um, student named Emily Purdy. Um, who is also engaged in a DI context, and I just was blown away really by the, like, professional caliber of our student performers. Like the choreography, the singing talent, the acting talent, the fact that big portions of it were improvised, um. And, and, and just the, the thoughtfulness of which the whole musical was done, like, I was really impressed. And there was something about being actually on stage that really made me especially vivid, you know, rather than seeing it for the audience, but, um. Really just thoughtfully done and really wonderful piece of theater. So that was a lot of fun. And I wanted to remind people that this Friday morning are the PTA Council Awards, um, from nine thirty to eleven thirty at the Congregational Church. So if you want to see.
That was part of my. Go ahead.
Uh, I was a PTA council member.
Yeah.
We'll work through tomorrow. Um, and, and, and they're great. It's just an opportunity to, um, to thank and acknowledge, uh. You know, staff and, um, parents who, who kind of go above and beyond. Um, in working hard for our students, um. The, there was, there were some really good discussions and, and, uh, some about, um. Dawn presented, uh, the, the budgeting, um, slideshow that, uh, we haven't seen with the board, but maybe we will.
Oh, the legislative.
I did send it to the board, uh, I'm very, I sent you the whole thing. There was lots of slides. That was the legislative summary. And the, um, the summary of the budget. And so we did kind of condense that to get that word out to.
Right. So, and, and, and I think with the intention of, of number one, came to the community that, um, our budget lows are not over, that. We could, and then also to hopefully get advocacy from our parent community, um, with the legislature to continue to push, um, for improvement in school funding. Um, you know, we, yeah, we have, we just need to. So, um, and then, uh. The. I was at the Island Park PAC meeting, um, Tuesday, I think. And, uh, that was very, was, uh, Mr. Hoffman's last PAC meeting, um. So, you know, he's really, what, what he really expressed is, um, I don't know if he's getting the words for him, I know he's gonna be there, but, um. What he really expressed was that he, um, is, he feels like he's leaving, um, Island Park, you know, better than he found it. And really is happy with the transition and feel like he's living in one of your hands. It's, it's, um. A great community. It's a great PAC board that is really supportive of and asks great questions. Um, I. I, I just want to make a statement at the end. I appreciate these conversations. Um, I'm not opposed to HICAP. I know someone's gonna like put that out there. I'm not opposed. It's necessary. It's a necessary service, just like special services are. And with like Tiam said, I want to make sure that our students have every opportunity. Um, I just am sick, I can't stand the fixation on it. Um, I think that we, that when, when parents get fixated, our kids are, are watching us. Um, that's my concern. I think it's really causing a lot of damage. But I want those services there. I want them learning in the classroom. And having those opportunities. I just think that we could be doing it a lot better. If we let our teachers teach our kids and the parents kind of step back and, and quit applying pressure. In, in, anyways, I'm not opposed to HICAP. It's important and it also is a loss, which I kind of believe that, so.
So the work thing on Friday, yeah, there's all work going on that week?
Oh. You're supposed to be, you'll be attending. Is everyone going, is that a? We can just make an easy post that says you're attending.
I'm already pretty close. You're probably not scared of the same. Yeah, that would be good. They're like, thank you. And I also, um, this is never brought up. I, I, I do wanna, it made me think. Sometimes I apologize when I hear people talk and I'm like, oh, okay. Um, I, I do distress, um. Part of it is like, uh, we have to provide the services and opportunity at the institution. Um, but another perspective, uh, um, this is not how I raise my kids, but I know a large portion of our community, a lot of the Asian community. They intentionally came to Mersh Island. They left their country to really seek this opportunity. To put their kids in a place where they can get the education. And for them, uh, because education is the only way to rise up. So even, you know, uh, I, I guess, I totally understand you, whatever, because that's how I try to raise my kids. But then when we kind of tell them that the kids will be okay. It's actually a very privileged thing because we. I don't mind kids will be okay, because hopefully if I still work where I work, they will get free education and they'll just slide in and they'll get zine, you know? But then for a lot of folks, uh, to, to be okay, they do need all these grades. They do need all of these classes. And so the culture that we create, the stress culture. Is, it's not, I don't know if we can control that, you know, because you think about the sacrifice, you know, people are, are leaving, the, you know, the father's staying home and the mother's coming here with their kids. Give them this education. We have, we have to recognize that. And some of the barriers and the stress is like maybe how we label it, right? If we call it like yesterday, we call it tightly people, of course. People don't want to put their kids in the best. If we don't, uh, if we don't message right. In that, hey, our, uh, general education is private school level, you know, so it is that, you know. Because people are intentionally coming here. So I think we have to recognize that reality. And then, so it comes out from really parents wanting to do the best for their kids. Ultimately, it comes out as stressful, right? But in the end, I think parents just want to put their kids in a really good place to be successful. And, and so I just want to give a perspective of somehow that Asian communities see about these opportunities. It's not because. They're pushing their kids to death, but because this, they put them, they think this is the only way to succeed in America. Just want to, um, talk about.
We are ready to.
I move that to your end.
Second.
All in favor of saying I.
Hi.
I mean, it's time for the talk, talk again.